Thank you. Would you please join us for the pledge?
Our pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Would you remain standing, please, for a moment of silent prayer reflection? Thank you. Before we start, and if anyone was wondering if they missed a year, and I'm the mayor, I'm not. Mayor Quill was in California for a NYMER conference. That's New York Municipal Insurance.
Reciprocal.
Reciprocal. He's on the board for that, for New York State, and the weather got in his way of getting home on time, so that's why I'm here. So Clerk, would you read the rules and regulations for public to be heard?
Sure. At this time, we will open the public-to-be-heard portion of the council meeting. As a reminder and pursuant to council rules of procedure, prior to addressing councils, speakers are asked to state their name, address, and any affiliation. Your remarks must be limited to three minutes and concern only issues involving the city council, city government, or matters of general city concern, and all speakers before council will observe commonly accepted rules of courtesy and decorum.
Is there anyone who would like to be heard tonight?
Hi, my name is Susan Rusenko. I live at 111 North Marvin Ave. in Auburn, New York. The reason I'm here and the mayor is not here, on February 13th, I'm sorry, on February 19th, he, I, let me back up. I saw him in his office. I asked him about the city signing a resolution. He said that he would forward it to city council. I'm looking for the City of Auburn to do a resolution for the Compassionate Care Act, which is medical marijuana. I'm wondering if there's been any discussion on that. And also, all of you, I believe, were sent through multiple sclerosis resources of Central New York Health Forum that's being held next Wednesday, and no RSVPs have happened. So I just wondered if any of my emails made it and if there's been any discussion on it.
I don't think, I've gotten the emails. I can't speak for anybody else. We're not really supposed to engage in a conversation, but the mayor has been gone more or less for two weeks, back and forth. I will check with him. He's going to be back in tomorrow, and I'll check in with him for you. Someone will give you a call tomorrow.
Okay.
I think we have your phone number and everything.
I think so. And I mean, I have the email, too, that was sent.
I know he has it, so.
And then he said he was going to forward it. I don't understand how all this works. I came from, I drove from Albany today after, you know, lobbying all day yesterday. I'm not into politics, I'm into health, so.
And I understand.
All right, thank you.
Thank you. Does anyone else like to be heard? Nora?
Norm Davis, Neighborhood Housing Commissioner. I just want to give kudos to Mike Talbot and his crew for an excellent job they did as I was doing my riding around, how the streets were clear and everything, even though they had a lot of help from Mother Nature. And may they continue doing the good work ever since I moved up here when we've had bad weather of any kind. Mike and his crew, and even the guy before him, did an excellent job of the streets and everything, and we're very fortunate to have dedicated people in this city. Not only in the Department of Public Works, but in all commissions and volunteers everywhere. Auburn, New York is very fortunate to have people who really care about this community. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else that would like to be heard?
Hello. My name is Dan Hurley. I reside at 250 East Genesee Street, Auburn, New York. Tonight, I would like to thank the Auburn elected officials for bringing so much compassion and hard work to your roles thus far. I know that it must seem like a thankless job that goes unnoticed at times. Believe me, it doesn't. I know how much I value my time as a parent, a husband, part-time grad student, full-time engineer that commutes to Syracuse daily. So thank you for your time, which you could be spending on your own personal interests, but instead have chosen to serve the great people of Auburn. I could not help but notice several members of the council have displayed their passion in the form of letters and articles to the local paper this past couple of weeks. I always welcome and appreciate it when one shares their ideas with as big of an audience as possible so that the community can be educated on them and discuss them in a productive manner. However, I am concerned, I'm concerned of the criticism of colleagues' ideas and approaches to problems in this public forum. I believe it sets a bad tone for our community and future leaders. At the end of the day, criticism is just not productive. I don't expect the council to agree on every topic. I do expect the council to work together in a professional manner to come to a general consensus on the issue, on the issues Auburn needs to address. I personally do not agree with how every issue Auburn, how every issue in Auburn is addressed. I don't expect to agree with every solution, as I am part of a great community with many different ideas, many often better than mine. So please share your ideas as much as possible with our community. Once the ideas are out in the public domain, we, the constituents, will be able to decide for ourselves what ideas we prefer. I have faith in our community to be able to come to these conclusions ourselves. After all, we are smart enough to elect a passionate group of people to the council in the first place. At this point, I would say it is best to refrain from using anyone else's name but your own in these public education activities. If you feel one of your colleagues makes a mistake, please bring it to their attention in a safe, one-on-one environment that will allow both parties to address it in a productive way. Also, we have a great team of local reporters that I am sure will be able to address errors in any ideas that are shared in a public domain. Please let them and my fellow citizens lift this perceived responsibility from your plate. At my place of work, we have several soft skill development activities. Some of the most beneficial to me are a couple of books that I think would be good references for the council. I encourage everyone to read them. They are crucial conversation, tools for talking when stakes are high, and win, and How to Win Friends and Influence People by Dale Carnegie. One of my favorite quotes from the latter is, "Any fool can criticize, condemn, and complain, and most fools do, but takes character and self-control to be understanding and forgiving." Please share your ideas with the public and then work with your colleagues and the community on common solutions. Set a good example for the community's youth and those currently in Washington on what it takes to make progress. Thank you for your hearing and considering my thoughts tonight. Thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Bill Speck. I have the privilege of being the District Superintendent of Schools at the Keegan and Daugabosses, and as part of my responsibilities, I work very closely with Superintendent Constance Evelyn, who's here this evening, and the Auburn School Board. I see this evening you have a resolution to move forward that specifically addresses the gap elimination adjustment factor that I think has dramatically and drastically negatively affected education, not only in the City of Auburn, but in our state. Specifically, I see you mention in your resolution here that since 2010, Auburn has suffered the loss of close to $23 million in school funding. That's a lot of money, because other areas have also been hit, to the tune of 98 position cuts specifically for the Auburn and Large City School District, 357 position cuts for our nine components that ring this wonderful city. I would just, I'm here tonight to thank you for considering the resolution, and hopefully thanking you for passing the resolution to bring notice that something needs to be done to stop the bleeding of our schools. Looking around, I bet many of you are graduates of the city school system here in Auburn, myself being one, and it made all the difference in my life personally. I'd like it to continue to be a fine, shining example for students to come. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have a proclamation for the American Red Cross. The Clerk will read the proclamation, and we have with us tonight Pamela Groton. Once we're finished reading it, we'll present it.
From the Office of the Mayor, Michael D. Quill. Whereas the American Red Cross has touched many lives in Keegan County, as well as across the country and around the world, and whereas during American Red Cross Month, we thank those who contribute to the mission of the Red Cross, whether through time, money, or blood, and we invite others to support the Red Cross in helping people in need down the street, across the country, and around the world. And whereas the American Red Cross is synonymous with helping people and has been doing so for more than 150 years, launching disaster relief operations in the United States to help people affected by fires, floods, hurricanes, and tornadoes, and whereas the Keegan County branch of the American Red Cross works tirelessly through its employees and volunteers to support us when disaster strikes, when someone needs lifesaving blood, or the comfort of a helping hand, and provides 24-hour support to members of the military, veterans, and their families, and provides training in CPR, aquatic safety, and first aid, and whereas for nearly 100 years, United States presidents have called on the American people to support the Red Cross and its humanitarian mission. The Red Cross depends on support from the public to continue this humanitarian work, especially in these challenging economic times which impact the Red Cross and many people in our community. Therefore, Michael D. Quill, Mayor of the City of Auburn, New York, on behalf of the citizens of Auburn, do hereby proclaim the month of March 2014 as American Red Cross Month in the City of Auburn, and encourage all citizens to support this organization and its noble humanitarian mission.
Thank you. Thank you.
As Debbie said, I'm Pamela Groton. I'm the manager for Keegan County, and I'd like to thank everybody for such a warm welcome in the last 13 months that I've been here. It's been a pleasure. I am a Keegan County resident, so I'm proud of this community. Thank you for the recognition and support of the Red Cross's mission in Keegan County. In 2013, the Keegan County Red Cross was able to aid over 73 dealing, excuse me, 73 individuals dealing with local emergencies, assisted 23 military families, trained over 675 people in lifesaving skills, collected over 4,095 units of blood, saving over 12,285 lives. This could not be accomplished without the selfless giving of the time, talent, treasures of our community, Keegan County volunteers and residents. Thank you so much.
Thank you. And next, we have a proclamation for St. Patrick's Day, which will be presented on Monday at a flag raising here at City Hall at 10, 11 o'clock? I'm not sure of the time. Does anybody know the time? It's usually at 11, I think. There'll be a flag raising at a time I will announce later. Sorry.
From the Office of Mayor, Michael D. Quill. Whereas we reflect and acknowledge a country as small as Ireland can have such a tremendous impact on our country we live in today, and whereas communities across the country come together to celebrate St. Patrick's Day as our nation pays tribute to the proud heritage passed down to so many generations, and whereas a letter between 14 officers representing Ireland, Scotland, and England founded in May 1836 in New York created the Ancient Order of Hibernians, and whereas the motto of the Ancient Order of Hibernians is friendship, unity, and Christian charity, which has consistently grown throughout the nation greatly, and whereas not only did the Ancient Order of Hibernians protect, defend, and preserve art, dance, music, sport, and Catholic faith, it also welcomed and came to assist Irish immigrants to meet their own economically and socially, and now therefore be it resolved that Michael D. Quill, Mayor of the City of Auburn, New York, on behalf of the city council and citizens of Auburn, do hereby proclaim that Monday, March 17th, to be St. Patrick's Day in the City of Auburn in honor of the day that Irish people come together in celebration of St. Patrick, and be it further resolved that Michael D. Quill hereby welcomes all persons from Ireland and of Irish descent to our city and Monday's flag raising ceremony.
Thank you. And the next item on our agenda is a presentation. It's my honor to introduce Bob Penafether, who has been leading the troops for this project for quite a while, and he's done such a great job, and now we've seen the evidence of great work, and you're going to update us on what's going on at ARMA, I bet.
I thought you were going to give me a pay raise on top of all that.
Yes, we're thinking of doubling it.
That's a very nice accolade. Thank you. Just an update, ARMA, Auburn Regional Media Access, I mean, the short version is Auburn area has their own TV station. We can go anywhere. I mean, it's public education and government. Many people know that this has been an ongoing process for quite a few years, but we launched the TV station with Time Warner and Verizon synced together last January of 2013. My last report, I said we're going to start, we'll do a launch, and then it'll be a series of rollouts and levels of activities as time goes on. I'm very glad to report that our mission has been accomplished to date where we expected to be, and due from a lot of work of volunteers on the Board of Directors, and it's an excellent Board of Directors with just unimaginable amount of experience in communications, from many different aspects of communications, from Steve Keeler, who was Vice President and Director of Communications at the college, you know, myself as president, and I'm not in communications, per se, as a, as a profession, but with the board that I have, Carrie Idol is treasurer, and I got to read this, I don't forget anybody. Steve Keeler, as I mentioned, is our Vice President and Board of Director, myself as president. We have Dave Thurston as Legal. We have Kathy Tripicano as Secretary, and the new members, we have Dan Tripicano, we have Ron Thompson, we have Joel Salamon, and we have Mike Reeve, all on the Board of Directors, and the last few have just joined within the last month. So that Board of Directors continues to grow. As of three weeks ago, we received our 501(c)(3). That's done, and now allows, excuse me, allows us to go out and accept donations and many other programs that you'll see unfold as we go through the next six months. By the end of the year, you'll see a lot of activity about ARMA in many different fashions, from fundraising to talks like this in front of organizations and what have you. Terry Cuddy was certainly one of the key members of ARMA over the past few years in an intricate part of getting this all up and running. Our offices and equipment is housed in the Auburn Public Theater Building across the street over here. All the cables from Verizon and Time Warner come into there. Our editing equipment is there. Anybody in the Auburn area has to be a city resident, there's check systems in place. They can rent the cameras, they can take the cameras once they take a class, and they can use the equipment, and they can take a class. Now, this opens the door for internship from the high school to Bowses to the college to do programming, directory, director, filming. There's so many areas that can open the doors to these students in our area that can bring so much new programming, like local sports, and film these games, film the plays, film the ballgames down at the park in the summertime, football games during the fall. We have the cameras and the equipment to do that. But the organizations like Pop Warner and Little League, they have to take the action steps, to take the equipment, go to the classes, and film their games, and then drop off the equipment, the CD card or whatever, SD card, rather, and we can program and get it up and running. In the past couple of weeks, under sports, you've seen Army King doing, you know, sports talk. His first interview was with Gino Albrezi, and there's just many more that can come down that line, and I'm sure everybody here and everybody that listens to this, they can relate, they can understand how deep this could run. So we're doing that. Sean Secor and Steve Gage are technicians. Their hours are posted on the site, when you can go down and drop off your CD or whatever you have to get set up for programming. I get some questions on this, like, well, what happens if something's a little raunchy and not proper? There's a system set up for that. If somebody tries to do that in this area, the filming is spotted first, reviewed by the technicians. If there's any doubt whether it should be shown, they give it to the Board of Directors. The Board of Directors look at it, if there's any doubt there, it goes right to Legal, and then Legal makes the final decision. I understand that hasn't happened in many, many years, so it's not a big concern. I also get the question about, from towns of Owosco and Fleming, why they can't use it. You have to be a subscriber in the city area. I say the area because there are some areas, and I believe it goes out as far as troop, that are on our contract. And Owosco and Fleming did their own contracts with Time Warner and Verizon before Auburn and during, while Auburn was doing their negotiations. So they cannot come in and film and drop off the CDs or whatever to be filmed. So classes are scheduled, you can look at them online on Channel 12 and on Channel 31, 12 Time Warner, 31 with Verizon, and the schedules are all there. Anybody in the area can go down and participate, and the classes are very professional, and they're held by professionals. And the programming is, can take off from there. And so I'm looking really forward to this summer of pole vaulting that area, you know, with the, with the local activities Auburn has. And any other organization, any business organization that wants to have an interview or talk show or whatever, that can be done, and we can, and we have the expertise to show them how to do that. The funding of ARMA, I get questions on that, is not from the Auburn tax dollar. It comes strictly from the franchise fee, and it's a very small portion of the franchise fee that Verizon and Time Warner pay to the city. So I want to be very clear on that, because I do get that comment every now and then. ARMA is not political, and as I said, we have an excellent Board of Education with many check systems, and it really, truly is teamwork. So watch it. This right here, is always filmed every week, is on it, and if you have any ideas or input, we are certainly open to it. There's streaming going on, so the people that don't live in this community during the wintertime, they can come in and watch local activities or watch council meetings while they're down south, wherever they park themselves for a few months during the wintertime. Any questions? I'll be more than glad to field any.
Is there a studio, like, if someone was going to do that, or do you find your own?
You know, that's a good question. We're right in the, we're right in the middle of building a studio. You know, it's a tight space, but that's the next thing on the agenda. Right now, the cameras would have to be used, you know, off-site, because the equipment and everything's there to do the editing and put it out there and do the programming, but not set up yet to do in-house studios. Okay? But with all the activity, I must say, with coming into Auburn, I mean, the timing of this is impeccable, because with all this activity coming in, you know, from restaurants opening up, to the films, to the festival, music festival, we've got an awful lot of activity. And for the people that can't get out, you know, for whatever reason, they can turn on the TV and get the enjoyment out of local activity. And that is really, to me, that's really an important function of this whole, of this whole thing. Terry? And be kind, be kind.
I will. Bob, I just want to thank you. I know that you've been, along with myself, part of the Auburn Cable Commission before ARMA was formed. I know that you've been there for almost 10 years in the, in the very beginning stages. I just want to thank you for leading the transition from the Auburn Cable Commission to actually having ARMA become, Auburn Regional Media Access become 501(c)(3). And again, I just want to say it was a pleasure working with you, and I'm very happy to see ARMA come to fruition under your leadership. So thank you for, for your help.
Hey, thanks, Terry. That's nice. You know, John didn't have gray hairs like he has now when he was working with us on this whole project, but it's, you know, it's self-satisfaction, and everybody knows, Terry, that it's not one person. It truly is teamwork, and there's not, you know, there's times we don't agree, and that's fine. That's teamwork. There's not a bad idea anyplace, but the bad idea, if you don't, put it on the wall, you use that piece of that idea with some other idea down the road, and you create a new idea. And that's the thought process. It's really, it's really a teamwork in process. I mean, it's fabulous. It really is. And I'm very proud of it, no question about it.
Counselor Camardo.
Yes, thank you. Bob, I also want to thank you and thank the members of your committee for doing this work, and, you know, it's not often said by, at least by council, that we thank the members of committees like yourself and different boards and organizations who give their time for the community, and we appreciate that. I'm sure everybody in this community appreciates all your hard work and all the hard work of all of our boards and commissions across the city that offer their time to make the city a better place to live. So thank you.
Great. Thank you. Any other questions? Or, I'll stand here all night for the accolades. Questions, problems, I'll sit down. Thank you very much for your time. I appreciate it. Any questions at all in the future? Most everybody has my telephone number and email and whatever. I'm not going to give it to you publicly here, but, you know, let me know. We'll be more than glad to help out any way we can.
Thank you, Bob.
Thank you.
Thanks for coming. Before I go on to the next item, I skipped the minutes. Must be something about minutes. Need a motion to approve the minutes from March 6th. Counselor Cuddy, a second. Counselor Camardo. Any questions or comments? We'll just call the roll, please.
Motion to approve the minutes from March 6, 2014. Counselor Camart, Counselor McCormick?
Aye.
Counselor Camardo?
Yes.
Counselor Cuddy?
Yes.
Counselor Resica?
Yes.
Carried.
Okay. Thank you. Do we have any public announcements?
Yes. Due to this week's winter storm, City of Auburn Electric Board had to cancel their March 12th meeting. The meeting has been rescheduled for March 19th at 5:00 PM here at Memorial City Hall, 24th South Street. And to begin the preparation of the fiscal year 2014, 2015 City of Auburn budget, the city council has scheduled special budget meetings to be held on Saturday, March 15th at 9:00 AM. They will review the Department of Municipal Utilities Corporation Council and City Clerk budget Thursday, March 20th. At the regular council meeting, they will review the Police Department and Fire Department budget, and Saturday, March 22nd at 9:00 AM, they will review the Department of Engineering, City Manager, City Council, and budgets of city boards and commissions. The meetings will be held in the council chambers here at Memorial City Hall, 24th South Street. These meetings are open to the public and will also be video recorded and subsequently posted to the city's website.
Thank you. Thank you. Anyone else have a public announcement? City Managers Report?
I have just a couple items. I'm happy to report that at Mill Street Dam, the turbine and some key elements associated with that hydropower project were delivered on Monday. The contractor's been working diligently this week and into next week to assemble those parts, get them installed, and hopefully get that system operational here in the next month or so. We had a period of time where the city's voicemail system was out of service, and it received unexpected media attention, but Verizon finally was able to resolve the issue, and as of yesterday afternoon, the voicemail system is back up. It was really a hardship for the Police Department, where a lot of their detectives and the tip line and things like that depend on voicemail, but it's operational again. And lastly, and when Mike Talbot talks about his budget, you may want to hear a little bit more from him about how he handled that very intense snowfall, but I did want to announce that one of the two trucks that the city council approved arrived just in time to use for yesterday's storm. The additional truck should arrive on Friday, so that's it.
Okay. Thank you. And let's see, there's, do we have And let's see, there's, do we have secret resolution or ordinance? I don't think so.
No.
Okay. Next, we have resolutions. I'm told the first resolution, number 46, is being pulled. Is that correct?
Yes. We've been unable to work this out due to scheduling conflicts and time commitment conflicts on behalf of elected officials, both at the city and at the county. So we would like to pull that, and we'll regroup and come back with a new date.
Great. Thank you. And next is Council Resolution Number 47 of 2014, requesting the Governor and the State Legislature to restore funding for educational purposes. Oh, thank you. Is there a sponsor? Counselor Cuddy? And the second is Counsel Rosika.
Council Resolution Number 47 of 2014, requesting the Governor and State Legislature to restore funding for educational purposes. Whereas in 2010, the state of New York instituted a gap elimination adjustment as the result of the financial crisis on Wall Street, and this action caused a reduction of aid to school districts in order to close a state budget deficit. And whereas this reduction was meant to be a temporary measure, but is still in effect in reducing aid to school districts. And whereas the Auburn City School District has sustained a $23 million reduction in aid, causing cuts to staff, programming, increased class size, and the closure of a middle school. And whereas the gap elimination adjustment not only affects our students and their parents, but also our community, since strong schools are important to community economic development while attracting young professionals who seek educational opportunities for their children. And whereas a local school district has few options when faced with deficits and can only access its savings for a limited period of time, and does not desire to continually increase property taxes, which would be a measure detrimental to the economy of our community. And whereas the Auburn City Council is desirous of supporting the restoration of the loss of aid that the Auburn School District has sustained, and the district is requesting that this body contact the Governor Cuomo and State Legislature to repeal the gap elimination adjustment. Now therefore, be it resolved that the Auburn City Council does hereby request that Governor Cuomo and State Legislature repeal the gap elimination adjustment and restore aid to our school districts throughout the state of New York, and particularly to the Auburn and Large City School District. And be it further resolved that the City Clerk forward certified copies of this resolution to Governor Cuomo, our state Senate and Assembly Representatives, and to each individual representing the City of Auburn.
Thank you. Thank you. I see there's members of the school board and school superintendent. If anyone else wanted to speak about the resolution, you're welcome to do so if you'd like. Hi.
Good evening. I'm Constance Evelyn, Superintendent of Auburn Schools. And I'm really, this is my son, Kiro Marshall. I'm really just here to thank the City Council and the City of Auburn for their support of the school district in our efforts to ensure that the, the Governor and the Legislature understand the negative impact that the long-term financial crisis that we've experienced across America and in small cities is having on our education system in Auburn. We have often said that we are only as strong as we are when we work together hand-in-hand as a community. We heard that this evening from another young man. And again, we are so grateful for your efforts to partner with us in continuing to bring awareness to this very critical issue that is impacting the Auburn and Large City School District and districts across central New York. So thank you again.
Thank you. Thanks for coming, too. Thank you. Anyone else have any comments or want to speak? Counselor Cuddy?
Yes, I just want to thank the Superintendent of the Auburn School District, Connie. Superintendent of the Kuganagabosi's, Bill Speck. Members of the Auburn School Board in attendance for, for being here. I'd also like to thank Kathleen Carnes for her local advocacy efforts for, in her group, Save Our Schools. And I think that this is a good example of where, where advocacy and activism and when governing bodies realize that there's a common goal, and that is the common goal of equality of life for the, the people in Auburn, New York, and the surrounding areas. And when I went to a, a, an awareness meeting at Seward School organized by Bob Montgomery, I had missed the, some of the other events where Rick Timms came to Auburn. And what I learned in just that night of the, the short meeting at Seward School both caused myself and my, my, my wife, Beth, to become very active in trying to raise awareness of this issue. And so I was very comfortable in talking to members, fellow members on City Council to bring this to a resolution tonight. Hopefully, this will raise even more awareness to those in the community. And, and really, this is a letter going to our State Legislature and our Governor, Andrew Cuomo, to let him know that, that, that the continued use of the gap elimination adjustment is hurting upstate New York communities in several ways. And this, this resolution is a statement from our governing body to our Governor to, to repeal this so that the state aid can come to, to Auburn, places like Auburn and other school districts in upstate New York, such as the ones that, that are in the Kuganagabosi's district. And, and we hope that our message reaches the, the ears and the desk of our State Legislature members and our Governor. And I hope that this passes tonight so that we can, we can stand together with our school districts and, and other municipalities that are, that are trying to make ends meet.
Thank you. Anyone else? No? I, I just want to say, I echo what Counselor Cuddy said, and, and I hope that, that this helps, but I'm glad that we can help. It's not like we're helping some other entity. I think we're all the same. The school district and the city are not two different places or people, or we're all one big happy family. Whatever happens to the city happens to the school district. So we all have something to gain or lose if we don't, if we do, are successful. It's up to all of us to, to work together to, to make the schools district work, to make the city streets safe. So I, I hope that this is a, a good opportunity, unfortunately, to work together. But I hope it does some good, and it does raise awareness. One of the things I do know about our meetings that are televised, and I'm sure you find the same, people watch meetings that are televised, and they do find things out that they might not normally be aware of. So maybe that'll encourage people to contact their own, they should not be afraid to contact their state legislators to talk about this. And any of this information is available on our website, too, the, a copy of the resolution. And I'm sure the school district has information, too. So if there's no other comments, call the roll.
Counselor McCormick?
Aye.
Counselor Camardo?
Yes.
Counselor Cuddy?
Yes.
Counselor Rosika?
Yes.
Carried.
Thank you. Thank you. That's it for the resolutions. You're welcome to stay. Really, you are. Mayor always says that, so I thought I would, too. You can leave, but we'll miss you. There's, next is local laws or table legislation.
I have nothing.
And now we go to other business. When we have presentations, I'll turn this over to the City Manager.
Okay. Counselors, if you recall, two weeks ago, we had an item in front of you to issue debt, issue a bond of $3.4 million to fund some water system improvements. That bond resolution didn't pass, and we were requested to come back with some alternative plans. So I asked our new Comptroller, Laura Wills, our Director of Capital Programs, Christina Selvik, and our Director of Municipal Utilities, Vicki Murphy, to put together a couple other alternatives, one being a pay-as-you-go proposal and another being a phased project approach. So I'll let Laura introduce this and...
Could I interrupt for one second, please? Can we go over the memo that was sent out this week, this week regarding the fund balance, the water fund balance? Could you? Are you going to do that first?
Sure.
Would you mind doing that, Laura?
Yeah.
Thank you.
The memo that I sent out basically discussed why there isn't actually enough fund balance to pay for this capital project out of fund balance. The first thing that I like to clarify, just so I make sure we're on, all on the same page, is that fund balance isn't cash. Fund balance also includes current liabilities and assets, both liquid and non-liquid. And therefore, a further analysis, just in looking at fund balance, should be looked at when considering how to finance a project. The second piece of this is that I would also like to say that we should look at both the water fund and the water capital fund before we make a decision, as the two are tied together. You can't look at just one and not the other, as a lot of the debt is contained in the water capital, as well as projects that are ongoing that haven't yet been finished. The water fund does have an obligation to pay contractors, whether it's out of the water or the water capital fund, which is why it looked like the water fund had a larger available balance than it actually did. Based on my analysis, it appears that we only have about $158,000, $57,000 worth of cash that we could put towards this project without digging too deeply into our reserves. We have about $3.3 million that is currently obligated to contractors through ongoing projects. And those are projects that were all approved by council and are currently ongoing. Could you let me know what else you have questions about on the memo?
Does anybody else want to go? You have any comments? Go ahead.
You're talking about the memo still, correct?
Yes. Yes. I, I...
Go ahead, Counsel.
If you have questions, I, I...
I can wait the last. Go ahead.
Oh, I'm, I'm, I just wanted, it seems like you want to speak first, so...
Oh, go ahead.
I'm, I'm, I don't have any questions except a statement that I'm, after looking this over, I consulted with, with two accountants, and I, first of all, thank you for providing this to us. This gives us an accurate account of where we stand with our encumbrances. And, and I, you know, I, I think, given in the past that we were unsure of going forward with a bond ordinance in which we would have to borrow $3.4 million to do the much-needed work, infrastructure work for our water intake and our water infrastructure, I think that this makes it clear that we do not have the capital in our water fund to, to do that. And $157,000, we'll round it up to $200,000, is not enough to, to, to go into our, into, to pay for something that is going to be $3.4 million. So I'm glad that you present, presented us with this information. It, it furthers my resolve as a City Councilor to, to reapply for a bond ordinance for $3.4 million to get the, to get our infrastructure back to its working, working properly and to improve the water quality for the Auburn and the outlying communities.
Thank you. Counselor?
Yes. First of all, thank you for doing the work. And as you mentioned earlier, when you come to council or when staff comes to council, we do need in-depth information. We are stewards of the taxpayers of this community and need to be looked at and analyzed as much as possible. I have some comments that I want to make. And accordingly, you were talking about three projects, correct, that the city's currently involved in, at York Street, the State Dam, and the Franklin Street Project, which all have an impact on the water budget. I want to look at a few things here. On September the 6th, first of all, let me start out by saying that the City Council has the authorization, when there is a project in, in progress or about to come and forth, come forth before the council, we pass a bond ordinance, which has an aggregate amount of money to be spent for a project. So with that said, the City Council on September the 6th of 2012, this was York Street, came the City Council, we passed a bond ordinance for $7.9 million for 15 years. Now, accordingly, just like a mortgage that you have at your home, we're going to set up in our water budget, we're going to set up a debt service, and we're going to pay mortgage payments. I want to call mortgage payments, they're debt services, what it is. But so people understand it, we set up a mortgage payment, I'm going to say, just so everybody understands. And we're going to make installments for, this bond was for 15 years. Council authorized $7.9 million for 15 years. Now, I did a lot of work this week, and it's not a snapshot, as people said. I spent a lot of time looking at these things. I also consulted an outside accountant. I checked over all the checks that were made in this project. This project was for $7.9 million. We hired a contractor for $5.9 million. And in that $5.9 million, water work was to be done to charge to the water account. So sufficient amount of money left over, almost $2 million. I realized there's some, some cost overruns that might be participated with that project, but $7.9 million on this one project, plenty of money to pay the debt without going into, into the, asking to take any money out of the fund balance. Second project, the State Dam. The State Dam came in front of council on March the 7th, 2015, for approximately $3.4 million, and not approximately, it was $3.4 million, 30 years, once again. And we're going to set up a debt schedule on this project, also, it'll be paid for out of the water budget every year, just like a mortgage payment, as I talked about before, for 30 years. I pulled out, with your help, Laura, I appreciate it, with all, all the checks that are due, other encumbrances that are due, plenty of money in that account to pay for this. Once again, we awarded a contract for $2.3 million, or bonding was for $3.4. These two projects, got to give a lot of credit to the staff. They both came, looks like they're going to come in so we don't have to bond for the full amount, both projects. And also, this project, just so we, so we get it right, this is $3.4 million from the State Dam that will be, that payment will be made out of the water budget. Fourth one is Franklin Street. Everybody knows that we're, we're doing the water line on Franklin Street. City Council on August 22nd passed a bond ordinance of $4 million. Unfortunately, in your calculations, Laura, you said that we're taking additional $400,000 from water fund to help pay for this project, when in August the 3rd of 2012, $400,000 was transferred from, from the fund balance to the capital projects account. So $4.4 million. Talked to Bill Lupien the other day. He said things are coming in very well. We should be well under the $4 million mark to complete that project. Checked all the checks, once again, made to the contractors. Everything is in line. I guess I, I disagree with your analysis. City Council authorized this money. It's there. It does not have to come out of fund balance. It's, it's been authorized by this council, by this board, with, and you're saying we have obligations, and I'm trying to get your memo here.
May I respond to that?
That you and Doug, can I just finish and then you can go ahead? That you and Doug came up with and says the fund balance shows obligations of $3.3 million to pay contractors, when there's bonds here that have plenty of money to pay for those accounts, to pay for those debts?
Those bonds have already been issued. That cash has already come in. There's no more cash coming in.
You, you have not, though, you're talking about...
The bands have been issued, but when they get converted to bonds, no more cash will come in.
And you have, how much have you applied for in bands so far? $6.1 million, I see, that you put down the sheet?
Correct.
And that's not, that's not even near as much as, as this, all these projects are?
That's because those bands are... That's because those bands are partially for completed projects.
Exactly, but there's still money available in these bonds to pay for those projects?
Yeah. They're not for water.
I understand that. We authorize bonds for those projects, and there's plenty of money to pay for those bonds out of that, out of those...
The cash has already come in for those projects, there's no more cash coming in. That means the cash that's left in these funds is the only cash that we have left to pay, whether it's in the water or the water capital fund.
Let me just go back to one thing if I can. You issued a ban, you, I'm not saying you personally, but the city did, controller's office issued a ban for 1.5 million dollars. Just in the State Dam I'm talking about. On your sheet, it shows 1.9, but it was issued for 1.5. We authorized 3.4 million dollars.
Half of that is for the, that's one, half is, half of that's for general fund?
Half of it's for general fund? And how come we didn't authorize a ban for the 1.9 that you're talking about?
I'm sorry, I can't answer that question.
Well, it's, it's on your sheet.
Do you know why we didn't issue the whole amount?
So, what, what I'm going to ask here is, and I've talked to Mr. Duroz about this, I'd like to turn this over, that our audit committee has complete review of this, Mr. Goethier sits on it, I believe yourself could sit on it, I guess, like, not that I guess, but Mr. Plateau from the hospital sits on it, CPA, Mr. Duroz also, and to get to the bond, pardon me?
That would be something the council would...
Right, this is a recommendation I'm making.
Right.
That's all I'm making, a recommendation, because I think these need to be reviewed to, so that we can get a clear understanding, because on your, on your sheet here, unfortunately, we're getting a lot of, there's a lot of confusion on these numbers.
Counselor Cuddy?
No.
I see, I see most of the confusion with the numbers that you've presented. Again, it's, it's one thing to, it's one thing to, I mean, I, I have every bond ordinance that's been voted over the last two years here, and I see that the, that the, some of the numbers that you were presenting, and the dates, didn't match up with what I have here, and, and that's, and that's...
Which, which are the dates, because I have the bonds right here.
Well, there was the...
The State, the Franklin Street, I'll start with that one, August 22nd, 2013, it's bond ordinance number...
If it, you're looking at the actual voted document, he may be looking at a report?
I'm, I'm looking at the, at the votes.
Okay.
And, you know, I think it's, it's, it's difficult to, to have conversations like this, where there are numbers thrown out, and then there's no verification, and I would, maybe, it might be beneficial if we did have what, the memo that was presented to us by Ms. Wills on the, on the board, so that, that could perhaps...
I don't know, do you have that on your...
Is that able to be, so the people, so the people of Auburn can see what we have? I know it's, it's, and then if there was any, if there was any issue with, say, the, the State Dam, or Franklin Street, those numbers, instead of numbers being spoken about...
Is this on a PowerPoint?
Yeah, we have actually something to refer to.
I mean, I could go grab it.
Oh, that's all right. Would, how about...
I just, I, I, but it doesn't serve anyone.
Right, it doesn't, but...
If, 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 if we just say...
What if I propose this? I understand. What if we let, if, I'll ask Laura when she's done.
We could do a recess, and, and, so that, so that...
Wait, wait, just a minute. Christina's coming up with a solution, I think.
Okay. Christina, just let me know that for the 1.9 million, there was a partial grant and some previously...
That's fine.
Previous design money.
When, I just going to make this point clear, whether it come, these are three bond ordinances the city authorized.
The cities, the city council authorized.
The city council authorized. Plenty of money to pay for these projects.
I understand.
There's money left over in some of them.
There's not money left over, it would be in the cash account.
Is it possible to get...
Can I, can I, can I just finish my point, please?
Yes, I'm sorry, I thought you were done.
Counselor Camardo, we're trying to get, help you get your point across by...
You don't, you don't, I don't need any help, I just want to continue my thought before I get interrupted, that's all I'm, I'm saying.
Okay.
The three, the three bond ordinances that were passed by the city council have plenty of money in them to handle these projects that were put forward.
How much money are in them, Counselor Camardo? With plenty of money?
There's money left over in, in everyone, in every bond ordinance, there's money left over.
I, I would like numbers, if you have those numbers...
That's, that's up to the controller to give those numbers, because I want to make sure that, when I'm saying here, there's plenty of money, I'm using an estimated amount that I'm seeing over this here, that, that's, so far, the numbers that Laura, Laura, Laura gave me are, are accurate, and I checked all the checks so far, these are the numbers I'm coming up with, and there's monies left in every account so far.
The finance...
This might help everyone. Can I make a motion for a recess, so that we can have the memo that was given to the council on the board, and then...
Then I'm going to make a, I'm going to make a motion also, that all three bond ordinances are put up on there too. So, if you want to table it for a week, I have no problem with that, but...
We're not even voting on anything, there's nothing to table.
I just had a motion to recess, so that we can get the memo on the board.
He, he just wants to show the memo.
I want to show all three bond ordinances also.
I can scan them in and put them on flashback.
There's a motion on the, the table, do I have a second? I mean, that's, I guess...
You want, there's a motion...
The motion to, to...
To recess.
So that we can get the, the...
So, are we going to get the rest of their information too?
We cannot scan...
Well, now we have to have a second.
Do we have a second to recess, to put a motion, to put a copy of the memo, to obtain a copy of the memo to put on our screen? Do we have a motion? Do we have a second? I second it. Would you call the roll for that?
Sure. Counselor McCormick?
Aye.
Counselor Camardo?
Yes.
Counselor Cuddy?
Yes.
Counselor Rusik?
Yes, but I do believe that the other documents should be shown as well.
That was not what the motion was.
Okay, so, can I make a motion now?
No.
Are we going to...
No, we've already, we're recessing, we voted on that one resolution.
Let's recess.
We're on recess, you can't...
How long are we recessing for?
10 minutes.
How long will it take?
3 minutes.
Can you get, I got notes on all these things.
I have a blank one. You need, just want to make a copy?
No, she wants to...
No, no, we're just doing this. This one?
No, she wants to...
We're not doing the... There, there are pages and pages and pages of information. Okay, we'll call them back to, call our meeting back to order. Before Laura begins, Laura has got the document that Counselor Cuddy asked for. What I'd like to do, just to keep things kind of moving along, is we'll discuss this memo, as Counselor Camardo had asked, and so that everybody can see what you're talking about. That's really the main purpose of doing that. Otherwise, I think it's hard to follow what you're talking about. So, is there a second page to that? Is that what you, the spread, or...
There's a spreadsheet that goes along with it, would you like to see that?
Is that what you wanted to see?
I...
Or is that what you're referring to?
Yes, right.
Again, what I want to do is just, you, you refer to certain, certain funds, or...
Mm-hmm.
Certain bonds that we're, that are basically, have been authorized, and how much has been spent on them, and what, what your idea of what the balance is, and what, what the, what is actual, what the balance is actually.
My question is that we're trying to charge some of these monies to our general fund, or the water fund, when they need to come out of the bond, the note itself.
Which...
We can't pay for these projects twice, counselor, and that's, that's where we're going right now. The way the controllers, one second, the way the controller's presenting this, we're going to pay for it out of the water fund, and it's, and we're going to get money in from the bond, from the note itself.
Maybe, let me, let me, because I think I understand what Counselor Camardo's saying, and maybe, before you talk about the spreadsheet Laura, we can ask Christina to talk about the bonds themselves, and the authorization to issue debt versus what we actually do issue, because I think that, that's confusing item here as well.
Sure. So, let's take York Street, for example, because that's a really complicated project. So, when we come to council for authorization for bonding, that generally would include everything that staff would estimate for road reconstruction, water sewer betterments, any other type of surface improvements that will be done as part of the project. So, we do our best to estimate what we think the project's going to cost at that point, go out for a competitive bid, receive the bids. I think the numbers that you're talking about are construction maybe only, there's design costs, construction inspection costs that are in there, other items. So, what happens then is we get all of those numbers in, we try to forecast how much cash we would need. Ideally, we do the bonding in the springtime, and then come May, we go out for our official statement and actually do the borrowing of cash. What you might see in the official statement does not always match what we do for bond authorization. We try to...
Hopefully, it'll come in lower, a lot of times.
Right.
Right.
So, so in the official statement for York Street, I think it was either 5.9 maybe, or 5.4 in actual cash that we had borrowed. That is because we try to make sure we borrow less money when we have federal aid projects, and balance that cash with the amount of federal aid that comes back in to replenish the fund.
Just to fill the record straight, we, the council authorized 7.9 for York Street.
Right.
Right here.
And that was an authorization, but we did not borrow that much...
No, I understand.
In the official statement.
But, my point is, we, you had authorization, I'm not saying you personally, I'm saying the city did, because they came to council and asked council to bond for 7.9 million.
Sure.
We had up to that amount to do the project.
Mm-hmm. We do, and we're going to spend...
And hopefully, we won't spend that money.
We're going to spend very close to 7.9 million on the project.
Okay, okay, but this, this is what the council authorized, was 7.9.
And if we, if we ever needed to exceed that, we would be bound to come back to council for an amendment for the bond ordinance.
That's, that's under New York state law.
Right, exactly. So, what I'm trying to explain is, the cash on hand doesn't necessarily always match the bond ordinance authorization.
I'm not talking about cash on hand. I'm talking about, out of this project...
You're really confusing staff now.
Well, I think, I'm talking about, this was authorized up to 7.9 million dollars that we can pay for, right here.
Right, and I'm not debating you on that.
This is money that's going to, this is money to be coming in. Lauren's sheet is talking about an obligation that we're going to have against the fund balance, the water fund balance, down the road, when it's being paid for out of this proceeds of this bond here. It's not going to be taken out of fund balance once again, it's going to be taken out of proceeds from this bond authorization.
So, the way the bond works, all right, so we've got our authorization, in May, we do our joint borrowing, and we would go out sometimes for 10 or 11 million dollars at a time, and that's to fund road program, that's to fund sidewalks, any bonds that we've done this springtime, and we get a better rate by pooling our assets and going out to the market that way. You know, just this past time, you know, we got, you know, just a little over four, or 0.4% by pooling our assets, by going out in that way. So, we do the borrowing, the cash comes in for how much we estimated we think we would spend that year on cash, because we would never want to borrow more, because obviously, we're paying that back with interest. So, you know, trying to think about that, we borrowed less than the bond ordinance, and the idea then was to balance the cash on hand with the reimbursement request we had to New York State Federal Highway, to bolt those to reimburse that fund for the work that's been done. Now, that particular project has general fund monies, water and sewer fund monies all in it, because there's all three types of projects that are done. So, the 7.9 of that, we had our 5.4 million dollar construction project, so that's general fund. Then the other monies on top of that, right, are for water and sewer.
For the water. But my point is, if we're going to get money paid for out of this bond for that water work that was done on York Street, correct?
Actually, I think Lauren knows what you're talking about. I think what you're getting at is that we got the cash in from, we got the cash in from the bonds.
I'm not talking about the cash, at this stage of the game.
Okay, let me just, can I just explain this real quick? This might help. We authorized and got that money for the bonds. When that money came in, maybe other things were paid out of the water capital fund, local pieces of projects that weren't bonded for, debt payments, when, when bands are refunded every year, a piece gets paid back. That's all the money that's left in water capital. Water fund needs to transfer money over to cover the deficit.
Let's back up. When you, let's, so everybody knows, a ban, a bond, a ban is a bond in participation note, excuse me.
Correct.
That you, it's short-term financing, what it is. So, the city goes out and says, we think we're going to need this to get through the project, which is a ban. When the bond is sold, all the bands are paid for, correct?
Yes.
So, what you're saying is, we still owe money on some of these projects, but they're going to get paid for out of the bond?
No.
Why not?
The ban is getting refunded by the bond, there's no additional money coming into the city.
Then why didn't, that, why didn't we cover the cost of this, of this, this project? We have the money right here, 7.9...
Because what I'm trying to tell you is that you have to look at the two funds in total.
So...
You have to look at capital and water in total.
I want to ask you a question, if I can.
Sure.
You're saying this, this money's obligated to come out of the fund balance?
It's obligated to be paid out of water or water capital.
Water fund balance, correct?
If you want to say it that way, yes.
I'm just going by your, what you, what you provided council with.
It's, it's supposed to be paid out of the cash assets from the water fund or the water capital fund.
Now, we authorized, the council authorized a bond to be issued, to take care of these obligations, not to come out of fund balance, to be taken out of this bond, no.
Correct, but when the cash comes in, it becomes part of this balance sheet, and therefore, part of that fund balance, so that's where it has to come out of, to pay the contractors.
You understand that when you have a capital H account, that everything's got to be accounted for in the capital H account?
Yes, that's what these projects are right here.
All expenditures, you got to have a set, a setup account, and it's transferred to a checking account, so you can make the checks to pay for it.
Counselor, this is, I think everyone is, if anyone else have questions about this, this, the, first, the memo?
Well, I...
Because it's, if you don't, what I just wanted to propose was that we let the staff do their presentation, it might help.
The presentation is going to be, I still believe, and I, I have the facts in front of me, that the fund balance is to, as we said last week, at 2.4 million dollars. Now, if we go ahead with the options that staff came in with, it's, the, the numbers have changed, if there's...
But there's, I would like to see what they proposed...
But all the numbers are going to change, though.
Well, no numbers have changed. What you had last week was an incomplete picture of our fund. You did not, you only had water fund, you didn't have capital water fund.
This is an incomplete?
No, that's complete, what you have there. What you received a couple weeks ago when we defeated the bond ordinance, that was incomplete information.
That was what?
Incomplete.
But, in a, in a, in a way, may I, this, this project is part of our capital improvement plan, which is done in a five-year, is it a five-year plan? So, it started, I was doing some research, thanks to Counselor Camardo's questions, to get more familiar with how this comes about, and it's been since, I think it was 2008, that these, these projects were identified by professionals, engineers, and it wasn't just the, the water, there's others, other places in the city that are under the, in the capital improvement plan. In May of last year, Christina presented the plan, and council voted on the plan and approved the plan in September. All of this was in it, along with outstanding debt for the water supply, which I think does what you're trying to...
No, it has, there's no bearing on that whatsoever.
It doesn't, it says water debt, outstanding debt for water supply.
Recognize the debt, but it's not recognizing how much is in the fund balance at that time, and how we perceive to pay for these projects, and how they would have an effect on the ratepayers of the community, so, no, it doesn't.
Well, but, but I was going to say is, this, these things seem, the questions that are coming up now, as opposed to back when all these were putting in, being put in place, it just seems...
Right now, we're, we're doing a project, it's on the table, we should have good analysis, that's my point.
Oh, I think we've got that.
This is the best analysis I've seen ever at a city council meeting. I mean, like, this is like, I mean...
Sort of DNA, I think we've got.
It's, you know, and I'll be honest with you, I had to... It's, you know, and I'll be honest with you, I had to consult with, with two accountants to, to, you know, to just double check and make sure it made sense. A few of the things that, you know, that, that made sense to me. The water capital, well, the water capital fund is the, the engine of, of all of this. And what it, what it provides is the oversight. I mean, this is money that really can't be messed with. And that's the thing, is what, what I think is, is, you know, is what we're concerned about really has tremendous amount of oversight built into, built into it. So, my, what I, what I, what I, what I think is, is, what I'm heartened by is that, is that because the water capital fund serves as the, the money being, coming in and the money going out, that's, to me, is a safeguard. And, you know, and I think that, you know, to say that there's money, more money than that, that is, that is here, you know, I, I can't see that. And I think that now might be a good time to just, maybe just walk us through this document and come, let us know what, how you got to this number. And that way, maybe that will can, can iron out some of the discrepancies that might be, might be-
That way, I think everyone will get a better picture of what we're talking about.
Yeah, absolutely.
Thank you.
Okay. These are the balance sheets as of last Friday for the water and the water capital fund. What this shows are all of your assets and your liabilities. The balance is the fund balance. Fund balance is not necessarily spendable. When you look at the two in total, you have 4.3 million dollars worth of cash available. The items highlighted in pink are what I consider liquid assets, which can easily be converted into cash and spendable. The items highlighted in blue are current liabilities, which will need to be paid back in the near future.
What were the red ones again? Could you just tell me that again? I, I didn't catch. The red?
The red are items that I consider to be liquid assets, which will be converted into a liquid form, which would be spendable in the near future.
So, the $600,000 in rents receivable is going to be a liquid asset?
Yes. This section, this section right here shows the projects that are currently authorized and ongoing. In the balance column, it shows the amount that we have left to spend on that project, which is basically the amount of obligations that we have to contractors to finish these projects. All these projects have already been started and contracts have been entered into. This total is 3.4 million dollars. This next section at the bottom shows the total cash that I mentioned up at the top of the spreadsheet. And then, it shows the total obligated cash, which are those obligations that we have to contractors. Also in this section, that $350,000 is the expected revolving loan fund transfer that's been discussed at council that you're waiting on a policy to authorize.
Zero percent?
Yes. Yep. Yep. So, when you consider those three items together, your unrestricted cash is currently $615,000. What I did next was add the liquid assets, the assets that are easily converted into cash, able to be spent. And then, I subtracted the amounts that we owe other people right now. I also subtracted a $400,000 reserve balance to make sure that we don't go into a critically low level. This brought us down to approximately $157,000 of funds were available to spend.
Go ahead.
Okay. The State Street dam project, you got on here authorized 1.9, but you issued bands of 1.5, is that correct?
Yes.
Now, on these bond ordinances, have any of these been cashed?
They've all been issued. All of them are still in band form. All of the cash has come in.
That's my question. How much is in band form and how much is authorized by the bond resolution?
The ban and the bond resolution are the same amount.
How much do we have in bands so far on these three projects? There's 7.9, 3.4, and 4 million.
Isn't that 50%, 50% is capital, or? That was in the packet. I sent out to all the counselors what the ban was made up of in the email on-
I was wondering.
I have it somewhere.
I want to know, you're talking about bands for the water fund. I'm talking about these three projects here.
Okay.
Total amount of banned monies available that was-
For which funds again? For State Dam?
York Street, State Dam, and Franklin Street Project.
York Street is currently $378,000. But, mind you, that is only the water piece.
I want to know how much of, how much, how many, how much bands on the, we'll take the York Street project. How much was issued in bands so far?
For water or for the total project?
I'm talking about total. Because water fits under this project. And if there's more money that was spent on water, can, water can be-
But, we can't use any money except for water money on the-
Hang on one second. The council authorized a bond resolution for this total aggregate of 7.9 for that complete project. If you're saying to me, the water went up, if we had an overrun in the water, it needs to be taken out of this bond for York Street.
Okay.
Correct? Just for York Street?
Just York Street.
Right, that's the intended purpose. So, what you're saying to us is, we're short in this area, but we still got money in the bond?
There's money in the capital, in the capital general fund, yes.
Then, how come that's not taking care of the bond obligation or the water obligation we have with this project? This was, this was authorized, 7.9 million dollars was authorized to spend on that project, including water repair mains for York Street.
I, we could increase that one, but that one only.
Okay, so there's one that we need to increase. We're going to, we're going to move forward on these if we can. State Street, State Dam, how much was authorized in bands on?
I'm not sure if this is-
Yeah, I, I, that's not, that's not any kind of verdict.
No, I, I want to-
It's a verdict for my, my questions that I have.
Counselor, there, I don't want to put Laura or Christina on the spot. They're trying to accommodate your questions and to make rash, or, I don't know if they're rash, but to make quick decisions here in council about finance, just based on a couple of sheets. I don't think, I don't want to put you on the spot like that, that-
Put us in the spot. We're trying to analyze information that's being presented here tonight.
I, I know we are.
To make sure that the fund balance-
But, I don't want them to make decis, have to make decisions.
Okay, so then, when can they, let me ask you this. When can they get back to us with the questions I have?
Well, Counselor, and staff, you know, we want to understand where you're coming from. We do, truly. So, for State Dam, you saw in the official statement, we went out for 3.1 in bands. But, you gave us an authorization of 3.4.
3.4, right.
Right. So, you're thinking, why aren't we going out for additional bands for that 300,000?
No.
Of revenue to bring that back in to help balance the fund?
No, no, it's not my question. My question was, I understand, we had 3.4 million dollars.
Yes.
With Laura, Lawrence, Lauren's-
We only borrowed 3.1, though.
We got too many Laurens and Laurens and, pardon me?
We only borrowed 3.1.
Okay. So, State Dam is, we issued bands for 1.9?
We didn't issue ban, well-
According to Lauren's.
Okay. And hers, yes. We also have a $300,000 New York State DEC grant. So, that's added on top of that. Plus, there's an old bond that's part of that project, $200,000 that was probably issued in maybe '09 or even earlier for design. So, now you've got $500,000 added on top to the 3.4, and that gives you 3.9 total project authorization. So, that's where we're coming up with either-
So, there's a ban right now, 1.9, I believe, according to what-
Well, that's not all cash because the grant is not cash.
I'm not talking about cash. I'm just talking about-
Well, the ban is cash.
Okay, if you want to look at it like that, that's fine. So, it was authorized, 1.9 was in band. So, 3.9, so there's $2 million roughly left?
We're going to spend, I mean, the $200,000 spent, the $300,000 spent, and, you know, we're going to be very close to spending most of that money in these projects.
That's my point. If we're spending that money-
We're spending.
It's coming out of the bond.
It's coming out of whatever the authorization for that project was.
So, it doesn't have to come against fund balance, is my point. It's coming out of the bond.
But, fund balance has to pay back the bond ultimately. So, we borrow, we borrow the money, do the project, and then, fund actually has to pay back that money.
So, we took the money from the bond and put it into fund balance?
So, the money from the bond is actually in capital accounts.
It should be in-
So, that's where the money is sitting right now.
It shouldn't be in, coming from the fund balance, is my point.
Ultimately, though, fund balance has an obligation to pay back the capital account, though. So, that's why you're seeing this as owed debt back to the projects.
From my understanding, the capital water fund is kind of like the, where everything is, goes through. It's like the net, it's like the matrix and everything goes through.
Our large, big capital assets are accounted for in an expenditure and a revenue account, all under the same project account, so.
So, then, how are we short where we got to take money out of the fund balance, is my point?
But, we're not short with any projects.
Wait, well, according to Lauren, Lauren's-
But, we have to pay the money back that we borrowed.
Well, you're right. And it should come out of the water capital account or however it's set up, not, not the fund balance. The fund balance is a total different account.
I don't think we're going to satisfy, the communication is not working for some reason. Maybe, Counselor, would you agree to meet maybe with?
I have met. The only thing that I wanted to make sure that we, we could set up the audit committee once again and have a complete review so that everything is, is documented correctly. And I'm not saying anybody did anything wrong. I just want to make sure that everything is followed through because we've bonded for money. I don't understand why the money's not there to pay for that without going into the fund balance.
I have a question, quick question.
Because I can't-
Laura, answer the question.
Oh, I'm sorry. I always want to ask a question about the audit. The, the firm that just did our audit, they did our books, checked everything out. We passed with flying colors our audit. Do they review how we treat our bonds and how we manage our funds?
Yeah.
And, and that report came out, right, came out well?
Well, yeah.
That was, that was an audit commit, that wasn't the audit committee. That was the professional paid certified public accountant firm that we hire and pay.
If I could just make a point to that, what we did was make sure that what was reported was correct, not necessarily that we wouldn't have reconciled your capital projects to make sure there was the right amount of cash in there. That's not something that we would have been engaged to do.
It's, it's done when the operational-
But, that is the job of the comptroller to do. And we, we just hired Laura to be the City of Auburn's comptroller. And, and she's already provided the city council with, with spreadsheets, with analysis that we can discuss here as we are now in, in, in session. But, I, I think there needs to be a, you know, something that, you know, where there needs to be an understanding of what is being, it's, it's more complex than this, but I don't think an audit committee is going to, is going to add a layer of transparency. It can, you know, it could, to me, it can even add a layer of, of confusion. So, you know, I see a, I see a staff where Christina and Laura have a firm understanding of, of what is in our accounts. And what needs to happen is, it just needs to be clarified to, to you and us and the people of Auburn. But, I don't think we can, if we're, we're having, if, if we're having, if we're trying to clarify things and with each clarification, there's more, there's, there's more, I guess, I don't know what to say, there's more curveballs or, or things, I guess, muddying the, the understanding of what I see is, is, you know, as clear as it can be presented on one page. You know, it's, it's, I'm worried. I-
What are you worried about?
I'm worried that, that, that we're not going to be able to conduct the kind of business that a city needs to conduct, like borrowing money, so that we can do the much-needed repairs to our infrastructure. You know, and I, I just want to say that, you know, we've had, you know, over the last two years, there have been bond ordinances with, with very little, you know, I mean, it, this is the kind of council that I wanted to, to join, that, that, you know, five zero votes for bond ordinances to improve the, to improve our infrastructure. And, you know, we had the, you know, we had the, we've, we've had the Mills Street hydroelectric. We've had the water, road improvement program, sidewalk improvements. You know, I'm just wondering why, all of a sudden, to me, the most important bond ordinance, which is our drinking water, is having such an, we're having such an issue passing something that is, that is, you know, just as important as, if not more important than the bond ordinance that we've, we've passed with, with very little, you know, question. Some of them are almost identical to the bond ordinance that was shot down two weeks ago. So-
Counselor, I'm glad you brought that up because that needs some clarification. Number one, as the city faces some tough, difficult times, we need to have, make sure that we're having proper scrutiny. But, you made a comment that you're concerned why this one bond resolution had some questions. My question, and unfortunately, you wouldn't support my amendment, where I want a direction to be brought back to council. So, if zero wasn't obtained, that we would be, come back to council so we could have further discussion and the impact on the rate payers could be discussed. That was, that was my concern. So, after I had that concern, I started looking through some of the balances that we had and realized that we had a very healthy fund balance, a fund balance that's required to, required that we only have between 5 and 10% of the operating budget of the city being fund balanced. So, that's money that the taxpayers paid for. That's, that's fund balance money. I have no problem, as I stated here many times over the last two years, spending money on infrastructure. And I want to make sure that we do it in a correct manner, that we try to do it as efficiently we can, have good dialogue with staff. And I feel that we're doing the same tonight. As every subject that I bring up, I like to have dialogue because I like to understand it. The general public likes to understand it. And we got to make sure that we're spending every penny wisely. So, they keep saying this is, this is political or something like that. Through my last two years on council, I've voted with the opposite side of the Democrats, the Republicans. The bottom line is, I'm looking out for the taxpayers. Nothing political. I look out for the taxpayers of this community. But, to say it's political, is this something that's going to be coming that the council, years to come or to come, or whatever the case, the comment was, I don't even like to make comments like that because I want to talk about the facts and you're, you're entitled to every comment to you, that you would like to make. I just want to make sure that the point is that there's no politics involved in my decisions on this council.
Thank you. Could we?
I, I'm all, I'm interested in the facts. I'm interested in the record. And I, you know, records are there to be, to be discussed. Records are there to, to consider when making policy. And, you know, I, I want, you know, this, to me, the, the, the water quality that, that goes to our faucets is supremely important. And I've watched over the last month, you know, reasons why we shouldn't, what, reasons why this bond ordinance shouldn't pass. And last week, Friday, we, we got a spreadsheet from an accountant, CPA, our comptroller, that basically says that our fund balance is not, is not as healthy as 2.4 million dollars. And so, what I want to do is I want to not, you know, I'm not interested in how I look or what I say and how people interpret it. But, I am interested in passing a bond ordinance that- But I am interested in passing a bond ordinance that will enable the city and its, and its staff to do their work and to improve the water supply in Auburn. I think any alternative or any kind of, any kind of, I guess, any kind of, I guess, apprehension amidst hard data is, is going to delay and is going to, you know, put any kind of, any kind of thing that can happen wrong at our water filtration plant. It could put, it could put our infrastructure at risk and end up costing us more money. And the other thing about the bond ordinance that I, that I do think it does is it, is it basically saves taxpayers' money. In the long run, it saves it to, it's, we're going to see a presentation tonight that gives two scenarios. One is the, the bond ordinance, if it passes, it's going to save taxpayers' money. And we will not see rate increases until a few years down the road, and those will be incremental. Or the taxpayers, the, the water rates are going to be raised if we don't borrow money, and that is, that is.
See, that's, that's where you're wrong, and I don't think you've done, at least, you, you haven't read the information that the staff gave you. With the bond ordinance, there was going to be an increase in water rates.
Yes, but not, but not immediately, but not immediately, and I said that.
It was the first year.
That's scenario number two. That's scenario.
I'm not talking about scenario number two.
We'll let staff do the presentation.
Hang on one second, because I want to, I want to clear up an issue. Where's, where, if the bond ordinances was passed, was it going to increase water rates?
Let's, I think we're going to pass that.
I'm asking a question to Mr. Selby.
I guess I'm out of control.
Yeah. What, and, and one of the models that Laura's run, one of the scenarios will show you the impact on the fund balance, depending on whether you issue debt to pay for these projects or whether you, what we call pay-as-you-go. Use, use whatever money we might have available today and raise the rest of the money through water rates. So we wouldn't, you know, it's a non, no new, no new debt.
Before we move on, can just one.
No, we're going to move on. We're moving on. We are moving on. Ready?
Question, I still have the floor, Counselor.
No, I, I'm moving on.
I still have the floor. I've asked a question.
Laura, would you go, go right ahead?
One question. I still have the floor.
You've interrupted, and, and you've had the floor for the last 45 minutes. We're done.
Counselor, I still have the floor. One question I have.
I'm sorry that you don't, you do not have the floor.
Counselor Rossi.
Laura.
Could you, could you tell us rules or regulations under the open meeting laws, please?
Open meeting laws?
Or the Robert's rules, I'm sorry.
Well, first of all, this was a discussion. It was not a resolution. There is no finality as far as any council action is concerned. And, I mean, if, I guess, Mayor, sitting Mayor, if you want to ask one more question, let him ask it.
Well, here's what I'd like to say. I've been very gracious, letting him ask more and more questions. And they evolve into more and more questions. And I have a bunch of staff here that are patiently waiting to do presentations while we keep running around the same tree. I just thought I would move things along.
I, I think.
But Counselor, if you want to, if it means that much to you, I'd go for it.
If I may, just interject here. You've been talking about other business. You've been talking about matters of concern to the city, and it's been a thorough examination. However, if you have one final question, ask it.
Thank you. Are we going to get some answers? Am I going to get some answers? How are we going to wrap this up?
Well, I, I think.
What's your question?
Well, I have questions about what the bonds, what the bonds, bands were and so on and so forth. Can we get the total amounts?
Could you write up your questions and, can you write up your questions and send them to me so that I know exactly what you're asking?
Sure.
Thank you.
All set?
Okay.
All right. We have been asked tonight to present some different financing alternatives for the capital project for the water fund. The first scenario is that we bond in different stages. We have a couple of different, both pros and cons for this scenario. First, the cost will be spread over the life of the system. Therefore, the people that are using the system will be paying for that system. Secondly, rates will increase slightly at 1% each year to eliminate any rate shock. We could start this project without increasing rates, but in a couple of years, we would have to jump the rate up significantly. Using a 1% each year will allow us to eliminate rate shock, and 1% on $2.05 is very, very minimal. This addresses the uncertainty of the final cost. Because we haven't been able to do any engineering yet, we're not sure what the final cost would be. $3.4 million is our best estimate so far, but there is a chance it, it could cost significantly more. Fund balance will initially grow and then be used to mitigate rate increases beginning in 2020. Funding will allow other projects in the capital plan to be initiated without dramatic increases in rates. The cons are that the users will pay interest and bond issuance costs. There will be two major shutdowns to the water system by doing this in stages. And funding through the EFC is less likely with smaller amounts. It will result in two instances of issuance cost. These are the different stages that we would break the project up into. The first stage being the rapid sand filter repair, along with other items, including the engineering, which needs to be done before the project can be started. Stage two would be the lower pump station, which is the item that could create significant additional cost after engineering is finished. There's also additional capital projects that are included in the capital plan. These are estimated at $3.3 million, and we had to include them to do an accurate projection. Yes.
These are coming down the road?
Yes.
They're, they're, we know about them now. They are, they probably will be asked for bond ordinances in the future. Can we go back to that just one second?
We, we limited these projects to those that exist in the capital plan.
Okay. So they're already, they've been in the capital plan? We're made aware of them tonight? Okay, great. Thank you.
This first scenario shows that the 1% increases that I discussed before. It also shows right here, this is a stage one, the debt service for the water project in question. Right below it would be the second stage, and you can see that the debt service wouldn't start until 2015. It would be June 2015 when the bond, or the ban gets issued. We've also included below that the $3.3 million on the last slide. As you can see, this line is the additions to or the use of fund balance for the year. For 2015 through 2019, you can see that we're adding to fund balance. Not a lot, but enough to where our fund balance is beginning to be built up. In 2020, we start using that fund balance because in 2020, that's when a lot of the bands are converted to bonds, and therefore the debt service is higher because the interest rate is higher. So it significantly increases our cost. So for the next couple of years after 2020, we will continue to use fund balance so that we don't have to make dramatic increases to our water rates. And then between 2023 and 2028, old debt, that's current debt that's already been converted into bands and is being paid on, that'll fall off, so we won't have to increase rates even further. It should stabilize. Scenario number two is pay-as-you-go. The pros to this is that we don't have any bond interest costs or issuance costs. The cons are that the 2014 rate will have to increase at least 25%, up to $2.56. We'll again have two major shutdowns to the water system. There'll be increased overall cost due to having to go out to bid multiple times and having different contractors. The fund balance will become exhausted. We'll have to do likely support from the general fund. There's, the likely support from the general fund is due to, even when we raise rates, we aren't going to see that revenue coming in for a while because, say we raise the rate this month and you are, you were billed last month, you have to wait the next three quarters until the bill goes out and at least another month after that to receive the cash. And then necessary projects in the capital plan may need to put on, be put on hold due to lack of ability to begin new debt service payments. This is scenario two. And as you can see, this slide didn't get updated. I'm just going to click through that. This slide didn't get updated. It brings the fund balance down to. Yeah, I'm sorry. The one that's on the screen is not the one you have. It'll bring our fund balance down to the $400,000 that we don't want to go below. I put an old version on my drive. It must have been. Do I have any questions?
The, the one I have here, the, the fund balance does not go under the $400,000. Have I got an, an old sheet?
It goes, it goes down to it.
Oh, near. Oh, I thought you said under.
We, we tweaked it. I think at one point I did. Yes.
I have a question. Was there a scenario, I guess, Doug, why was there not a scenario if we bonded for the whole $3.4 million? And that would be, because that might alleviate some of the costs. We could maybe even get some EFC funding, you know what I'm saying? Like that. Not that I want to add more, but I, I think that, I guess that's a question. Why was that not offered?
That was, that was the original scenario. So we, I think we were asked to bring back something different than was in front of you two weeks ago, so we didn't, we didn't bring that one back. It's, it's out there.
So I guess, could we, could we get analysis? I guess, put that into the scenario so that there would be a clarification of pros and cons with that. I know it's implied in scenario one, but, you know, something that would, you know, talk about the benefits of bonding for a larger amount so that the money's in place. It's, it's, it acknowledges the, the long-term, the long-term magnitude of this, of this. And it, again, and that's the other thing. I know that those are equally important, but, you know, say the first project takes longer than we thought, and then that's going to push back the pump even more. You know, I'm, I'm just concerned about, about the, you know, the timing so that, you know, the sooner we can get to these projects, the.
But what, I can tell you on behalf of staff and myself, what we presented two weeks ago is what we were most comfortable with because the, the economy is there of issuing debt once, the ability to do the projects concurrently without having to shut the system down two different times.
So you only have to shut, shut it down once?
That, that's the plan. We, we could do the major work that requires a shutdown with a single shutdown. A single contractor. I don't know what, maybe here on the floor, other advantages. Yeah, one, one debt issuance cost. And not a big rate impact.
And the other thing is that we did have, and that would also give us a better idea if we had the, if we had the, the contractor coming, it would basically give us a better idea so that we could, you know, have, I guess, we were supposed to vote a couple of weeks ago to meet with, was it CR, was it CRA? And that would have, you know, we would have issued the bond. We could, we could go through that process again. I mean, there's so many pros to, to, to the, to the first or the, the original scenario. You know, I know that you're looking for, for guidance from the council, and I just want to throw out there myself that I would like to see, at least from, from my perspective, I would like to see the first, the first bond ordinance. In fact, do we have to go to bond council again to get that drafted up, or is that ready to go?
No.
So it wouldn't cost any more money to have.
It would, it would come, that's one of the few things that can come back.
The, the one issue, and it did come at the last meeting, and we'll acknowledge that, is the uncertainty of the pumping station cost. With a phased approach, we do the engineering before we came back to the council to ask for the debt to be issued on that. With the approach that was proposed two weeks ago, the engineering would be done. We'd have authorization to issue a fixed amount of debt, which could be insufficient, would require us to come back and modify that bond ordinance. So that's, that's out there, too. We're, you know, we're not so wise as to know what the whole pumping station cost will be without the engineering being done on that. The other projects in this phased approach, we are more comfortable with those costs. They're more, better defined.
I have a question on water rates. I think people at home, that's the first thing that's going to hit them, I think. If we don't bond, if we just, doesn't pass, we don't bond, and we, whatever happens, if we can approach these projects and pray that nothing tragic and an emergency happens and we, whichever happens, what would be the, this year, would we have to raise our rates?
It would be immediate.
It would be immediate. So this year, this budget year, we would have to increase our, our water rates if we do not bond.
25%.
25%. 25%. So that's a guarantee.
And again, I also wanted to throw out another.
That's a guarantee.
I didn't, I didn't say it was a guarantee. I said 25%. It was our estimate.
It's a good chance we have to.
There's a very good chance, yes.
Very good chance.
It's actually a guarantee if we do the projects. I mean, if, if we didn't do them, then we don't raise the rates.
We have to do the projects. The, the health department.
I agree.
I mean, we need water. The businesses alone, I mean, even if we all buy bottled water, Nucor, the hospital, the prison, if they can't get water, I don't even want to know. We need to do the projects. So in other words, we have to do the projects. We've got to pay for the projects. It's either a rate increase or we pay for them over time.
Also, I was, I was wondering, would there be an immediate rate increase if we bonded for the full amount for the $3.4 million, or, or would that be, and the first rate increase would be in a, a couple of years? Because I know, go, I'm sorry, Doug.
Let me, Laura, I think it'd be a few years out, but go ahead.
We wouldn't need to raise rates right away. Our suggestion was to raise a small amount so that there's no rate shock. But we would not need to raise rates right away.
And I'm familiar with the rate shock. I was here when, we didn't raise rates for a long time, and then it's better to do it the little at a time. So I just wanted to bring that up so that people understood why we're talking about bonds and borrowing and bonds and borrowing. And sometimes that doesn't hit home. Where, why are we talking about that? We're talking about paying for something, and it's going to have to be paid for regardless of how we do. We have to do this. This is work we're going to do on the, on the infrastructure that brings water to the city. And it's in about 100 years old.
Could I ask a question since this is my fund? Could we get some guidance on what you want us to bring back? Because I don't want to waste another week.
I think that Counselor agreed to submit his questions in writing.
I, I guess, do we bring back the eight, the 3.4? Do we bring back the two phased?
Two of us that.
Or the pay-as-you-go?
Like the bond ordinance.
Until I get answers to my questions, I, I'm not going to be able to comment on which one I'm going to go. Because I'm still not satisfied with the discussion. Because I'm still not satisfied with the discussion.
Is it possible to get Councilor Camardo's questions answered inside the week?
It depends what they are, but I can try.
I think if you need any help, could you get them to her in the morning?
I can give them to you right now.
Okay, after the meeting. Okay. Thanks Laura. Anyone have any other questions?
Mayor.
We have an executive session because Andrew Fisher and these other budget presentations will take. Consider it an executive session and then come back.
Sure, sure.
Mayor, if I may, I know that we have two more presentations or three from staff, but we do have Mr. Fisher from the chamber and CETA. And this is a matter which requires some legal guidance. And rather than have him wait until all of our presentations are over, which may be later this evening, if we could have a short executive session to meet with him so we can get that business out of the way.
And it's in regards to what, John, contracts or?
It's, yes, it's in regards to, in association with the, his organization and also a very, very short personnel matter.
Okay. But a motion for an executive session. Counselor Cuddy, second.
Contract and negotiation matters pertaining to a particular individual?
Yeah.
Okay. Counselor McCormick?
Aye.
Counselor Camardo?
Yes.
Counselor Cuddy?
Yes.
Counselor Resica?
Yes.
Recession for executive session will be back after that is over. I think we're going to, the comptroller has graciously volunteered to move her presentation to another night so that we can get right into somebody else who's first after that, I think.
We have Public Works first.
So we can move right to Mike Talbot's presentation. Thank you Laura.
Let me make some comments before our department heads get up. What you'll see tonight, and this is in your packets, are the department head requests for their budget. I've reviewed all of these, but they haven't been cut very much. The reason being, I wanted the department heads to present a little bit about their departments, what they do, some of the requirements that they have to meet from a regulatory point of view or contractual obligations, and to tell you what they believe they need in their budgets to maintain services. The direction was not to enhance services, not to add staff, not to add new equipment. So you'll see replacement equipment. You'll see some things along the lines of training and things to support initiatives that improve efficiency and customer service. So with that preamble, I'll let Mike start off.
All right. Well, thanks for the opportunity tonight. I know we're the first department to go, so as you see, this is our budget preparation process. I know all, all of our departments are probably appreciative that we're starting so early. So hopefully this will give council a little opportunity to see why we put things in the budget. And I don't anticipate going through line by line tonight, probably at a future date, but this will hopefully give you some, some background as to why some items are in there and why some are not. So I hope I can answer all your questions when you do have them. Just as an overview, I did prepare just some slides. They're very simple. What I did not do is put up the budget sheets because you wouldn't be able to read them anyway on the screen. So I know that's why we're here, the budget sheets, but pretty much, you know, we all know the situation at Public Works, what we, what we once had and what we're down to now. So our, our people down there, our men and women do a good job with what we have. Unfortunately, equipment doesn't last long in these environments up here, just like people. Our people are, you know, we have an aging work staff and it's, it's all part of life. Now, what we've done down there to kind of compensate for some of the staff losses and other things we've had to overcome, you know, we adjusted some of our shifts to minimize overtime. We've organized our plow routes. We don't have enough people or equipment anymore to continue with how many plower, individual plow routes we had. So we had to restructure some, combine some. And unfortunately, one of the side effects is that is some of the, it takes us longer to get through the streets, but it's better than having an entire route with no truck in it. So we've all gotten the calls, where's the plow? So we're out there and we're heading that way. You know, we've had to reduce our recreation center hours and that's continuing today. And also down for collection, we've, we're organized our collection routes. If anyone remembers that, about four or five years ago, went to a four-day garbage collection and a Monday yard waste, which is, everybody loves it. So we also co-mingled some of our materials to better allow our staff to be the most efficient possible and really we scrutinized all our overtime down there. So sometimes if, you know, it gets called in, there's a dead cat or something like that, if it's, you know, some things just have to wait for us. So we prioritize what, what we call people in for. Now some of the, we did change some of the budget this year and what we did is combine similar departments into one account. So if, if we had some, we've, we had some accounts that were just lingered for years. They used to be very active and a little bit larger than they are now. So we combined some and this is just describes what we've done. Like signal lighting and street lighting were separate. Now we combined them into one. It's actually called signal lighting and street lighting. We couldn't find a real catchy name to encompass both, so we just kept that. Now parks maintenance, adult recreation and playground operations, we combined and do the parks department. So we did this in a few areas. Celebrations and band concerts now is called special events. RSVP and senior citizens programs now are called senior programs. And we combined the parks and recreation administration into public works administration. So we got rid of the parks and recreation account, but that person has moved over into public works administration. And the goal of this was to condense our budget because public works, as you see, we do, you know, I'm a little bit partial in the way I think, but to me, it's the, the services we provide are what our residents want and it's what our residents can see. So that's why we get up out of bed every morning and go to work. Now this is where we get into the, into the individual department. So really all these slides are going to do is summarize who's in these departments, a basic mission and, you know, any adjustments being made. So the buildings, if you go down, one thing you'll see in here is that what we've done and Laura has some good ideas about purchasing for maintenance supplies and everything. So at one time we thought of naming this account just City Hall, but in further, in further thought, we, we thought we'd keep it buildings and kind of combined all of city buildings, some of the maintenance out of this account, like cleaning supplies. What you'll also see down there is in services, which is the second page of this account, says painting City Hall. I think we've all seen the columns out front. You know, they need a little bit of work and they do need some, some attention. So that's what that's in there for. You have building repairs, the roof inspection. So it's all pretty self-explanatory in there. You know, and supplies up, up above that for the geothermal system. So does anyone have any questions on when you, you know, in the future, when you do go through this? That's what that is. Majority of it is maintenance here at City Hall, but it does include some of the other Here's the public works garage. Really that's the mechanics down at our garage. You know, we used to have, I believe, five or six mechanics. Now we're, with a head mechanic, now we're down to three mechanics and one is our head mechanic. So we'd like to see a little bit of improvement on our end of how we're charging our mechanics' times back to each individual department. Currently that's not happening. So we've got some good ideas on, on how to be a little more efficient of that. Now one of the mechanics, 80% of that, of his time is really allocated to maintenance of the police cars. So that's almost a full-time job in itself and rightfully and needfully so. So nothing really too crazy in here. Couple of parts washers we need. We need new parts washers in the garage. They're about $1,500 a piece. Also some heavier duty impact wrenches. You'll see that's in there. What we found with this extremely cold winter is the, some of the, we've gone through a few hubs on some of our heavier trucks and, you know, had mechanic feels that's a little bit due to the, not only the age of some of our trucks, but some of the freezing and thawing underneath. So hopefully this will help. Nothing too crazy in here either, pretty much. One thing you'll see under services, 440 is fencing and gates. As we, as we're all aware, we have absolutely no fence down at our garage. Anybody can drive in, anybody can drive out. So we're hoping to start picking away at that by putting, installing some gates this Here's the one we combined, signal maintenance and street lighting. We added this position last year and it's been, it's been just a real asset for the city to have this person. He's capable of doing a lot, everything from welding to installing outlets to rebuilding light poles. So it looks like, if you look at the numbers and we're starting to track it a little, a little bit more accurately, we probably go through, I say go through, probably anywhere from six to 12 poles get damaged per year. Whether that's by somebody backing into them, somebody sliding out of control, hitting it, but you know, six to 12 poles go down. Some of them could be reused, repaired, others are just broken. So that's what this covers. If you look at the electric account in here, that's for all the power, for all the poles and the signals. Now administration, that's myself, and what we did is move both clerks who are down there into this. We took one out of parks and rec administration and the other one was split between streets and the public works garage because really their function is administration. And I'll tell you, the two of them down there do an excellent job. They field a lot of, any kind of phone call from a, you know, a bat in the house to, you know, you people don't know what you're doing. So they're, they're very tactful and they really do a good job. And, and you know, I encourage anybody who ever has any questions on public, public works related items, please call us, any of the public or anything, because that's why we're there. We're approachable and we'll answer your question as best as we can. So really that's it. There's just three people in that one. This is one of our bigger ones right here, the street maintenance, and we all know what, what that entails. So these are the guys who've been out the la, you know, we've had people on plowing for the last 36 hours. So not straight, but they, they've been working 12-hour shifts. So that, you know, some of these guys are out of this one. What you'll see in here and other equipment is one-ton pickups. That's the, the dual-wheeled dump trucks that plow. We have two that are, in fact, the plow frame's cracked in this storm on two of them, so we've welded them back in place, but they're early 2000 and they're starting to show they're where. These are some of our most handy trucks. They can do the dead ends. They can zip in and out of downtown in the summer months. So these are handy to have. Other general supplies in there. Really nothing else new except for some vehicles.
Mike, you might mention the, the patching equipment we talked about.
Oh, that's right. We did have that in there. That is, everyone knows the, I mean, we've all watched the national news. We've all seen the craters that have formed, not only in our city, but all over the northeast this year for various reasons. And what we'd like to do is get one of those trailers that heats the asphalt in the wintertime because what happens is we're using cold patch, it's very hard to get that cold material to stay in the hole, especially in the higher volume intersections. And of course, if you put it in and then it snows that evening, it comes right back out. So that would really, I think that would, everybody'd see a benefit for that. So, but we can, you know, in our next discussion, talk about that a little bit. Snow removal, well, it's pretty self-explanatory. There's only overtime allocated to this account. All of us in public works get a little piece of snow plowing during the year, depending on the storms. We all know we let, I think, central New York with 17 and a half inches in the storm yesterday. And I think what we're doing down there, we're trying to approach our snow removal a little more scientifically and a little more analytically. So what I'm doing is breaking down and really coming up with some good costs for storms per inch or per road mile and materials and labor. So you know, it looks like we're consistent. What it comes down to is, and these are just really rough numbers, but I, it's, it's interesting to me, I hope it's interesting to everybody. Like the nine-inch storm we had in February, we went through about 450 tons of salt. So at $37 a ton, what it's coming out to is about 50 tons of salt per inch of snow for the entire city. So you can do the math if you have a nine-inch storm. And really the numbers, I was surprised they came out so closely. They almost doubled for this 17 and a half inch. So that's just our, our material cost. So and then you have labor in that, but I'm still, I haven't calculated that for this storm because it's really still ongoing, the cleanup part. So it, it does cost money to remove snow. We all know what happens when we don't remove snow. People can't move around. So nothing really out of, you know, a new, so we, we'd like to get a new salt spreader for one of the one tons. And we always put enough money in there for at least one plow blade for a bigger truck because they do get old and do wear and tear. This is one we, if you remember in one of the earlier slides, the parks department now includes adult recreation and playground operations. So you'll see some increases in some line items in there, but there's three departments now in here. So this also includes repairs over at Booker T. Washington Center and Clifford Field Clubhouse, Hoops Park Clubhouse. So Hoops Park comes out of this. Everybody knows how important hoops is to the community. Casey is, we all know how much Casey also means to the community. You know, our recreation programs have taken a hit over the last 10 years, so we do the best we can. You can see we really minimal staffing down there, but it, it works. We predominantly, it's, it's really, we provide ice in the winter. We provide outdoor recreation and the pool in the summer. Unfortunately, there's costs associated with both of these, but our city wouldn't be the same without these. So I think it's money well spent. See the cost for chlorine in here and also for some ice supplies.
I'm sorry to interrupt you. We can see it. Could you kind of, would you mind for Casey Park because it is a place everybody loves? Can you kind of summarize this, the, what you have budgeted for Casey Park?
Yeah.
If you have that candy, because the people at home and here can't tell.
Well, here it is. If, if anybody searches for it, the account number is A7143. This is Casey Park. So we have, you know, we really have two and a half people that work there. And everyone figures, how do you get half a person? Well, the other, one person, half their time is spent at Casey, the other half at Falcon Park, which is right next door. So then you go down, a lot of our, we make, we make our way at Casey Park with a lot of seasonal labor. If you look on the slide there, it's, you have buildings there, but you also have 45 acres. So it needs to be, it needs to be kept up. There's two picnic shelters. They're constantly rented out in the summer times. There's Freedom Recreation, the summer camp for some, some at-risk kids. That's been housed down there for over 30 years. That's a great cooperation between Freedom Recreation Services and the city. There's turf in the summertime, there's ice in the wintertime, there's pool. If, if anyone remembers about, maybe eight months ago, I did a presentation on Casey Park itself. And I think, you know, the building was, it was built in the early 70s. That's when it was developed, like a lot of community centers in the area. But the building, if you look, and Counselor, I'm glad you said that because in here is for a roof. There's two different roofs on the main building there. There's the flat rubber roof over the lobby and the, and the locker rooms. Then you have your peaked roof over the rink. It's the, it's really hurting the flat rubber roof. It's about $100,000. If you remember during the presentation, that's one of the urgent things that needs to be done, as well as the pool filtering system. So I don't know if everybody remembers that. I can get you copies of that. It includes photographs and everything. So, and in addition to that, our ice making equipment, the chiller and the compressors are getting up there in age also.
That's, I, that's why I do remember it and it seemed like it was pretty significant, the.
Well, if I remember correctly, for the filtering system, it's, we have two filters, rapids, not rapids, they're sand filters in their own individual vessels. Now they make them where you can get away with one filter because they're that much more efficient. they make them where you can get away with one filter, because they're that much more efficient technology is now. So, that is about $175,000. Because it really, and just to kind of put it in perspective, the, the pool holds about 780,000 gallons of water. And the waiting pool, everyone knows a little waiting, that's about 12,000 gallons. So, it's quite a bit, you know, you lose a lot in evaporation if it's a real sunny and hot summer. Obviously, if it's, if it's more cloud cover, you go through less chlorine, you go through less water. But we have to refill the pool a little bit each morning from evaporation, because it is a 50-meter pool, so it's a large surface area.
And that, and the ice rink as well, that has needs, is there some equipment there that's going to need?
Well, yeah, you have, uh, you know, we circulate glycol. That's how we make ice. Uh, that's really a system they don't use anymore. Uh, they use a brine solution now, because glycol is a, you know, it's regulated through the EPA. So, it's just getting old. We rebuilt one compressor. It seems like we have to rebuild one of the compressors every three to four years. So, they have some hours on them. So, everyone knows the success of the, you know, the high school hockey team that was, uh, celebrated by the community. So, you know, it's fun to, it's fun to see people down there. It's a, it's a simple structure, but really it was, when they designed it, it was, it was sensible. So, and all summer long, there's everyone playing tennis and basketball. It's, it's busy all summer long. So, I hope I answered your questions on Casey.
Mike, uh, let me interrupt, because we talked about seasonal and temporary labor. Uh, the council may or not be aware, we, we pay 725 an hour. Uh, we pay below minimum wage. We're, we're not required to pay minimum wage, that's my understanding. But the concern has become whether we can get reliability out of our temporary workers if they can go to work somewhere else, perhaps indoors, where they're not out throwing garbage or doing some of the less desirable things at the city. So, we haven't, uh, specifically addressed it in the budget, but it's an item I think we need to, to think about, was whether we offer our temporary workers at least minimum wage. Sorry, Mike, go ahead.
Well, that's okay. I'm glad you, I'm glad you brought that up, because really for public works, seasonal, seasonal labor does come into effect in a lot of our, our departments. So, uh, like the manager said, you know, they're on the back of garbage trucks. They're running weed eaters. They're, uh, picking up garbage. They're sweeping curb lines. They're doing everything, so. Any other questions at all on Casey Park? I guess one thing, you know, in our programs, and we'll go through it, I guess, at a future, at a future date when we discuss our public works budget again, but there is a cost to our programs down there. We by no means come close paying the bills. If we were to do that, we, the rates we would have to charge would, would be very high. So, we can discuss that, you know, we, there's cost to having a pool, and there's also cost to have an ice, so. Falcon's right next door. We have a half, a half-person's there. He's there, they're half the year. It's our facility down there. And really out of this, out of the 100 and 110,000, you know, to me, it's easily justified by the economic impact of these people that come into the, into our city over the four months and live here, eat here, watch things, uh, just enjoy the city. So, it's, it's very, it's not much expense for what I think it comes back to the community. Here's, uh, special events. We included band concerts and celebrations in this. So, here is our music and movie programs out at Hoops Park and also our parades, the Veterans Memorial Day Activities Holiday Parade, Christmas decorations. All that.
I have another question.
Yes.
Does the way we, the timing of the way we budget for this affect how or if you're avail, able to schedule?
Yeah, and, yeah, because we have to, we have to commit the dates to the company that does our movies. And how that breaks down the cost, we have, uh, let's see, what do we, we have, it's $9,200. That covers eight movies. What that includes, I don't know, hopefully everyone in this room has gone out and experienced a nice Tuesday evening out watching a movie. It's, it's, it's a lot of fun. It's family-oriented. And it's free for everyone to come in. It's free. So, how that breaks down is it's 870, $875 for the sound system and the big screen. And then in addition to that, it's $275 for cop, you know, no copyright infringements and the applicable fees that go back to the people who spent, you know, who made the movie. So, because these are current movies. It's not like, uh, you know, it's 10, 10-year-old movies. These, some of them are just fresh out of the theater, so.
So, we're, for this summer, are you able to schedule?
Yes, we have committed.
It's for the movies. How about the other, the concerts and things? Are you able to do that?
Well, what we do with that is get, you know, get the artists to commit and then...
Hope you can pay for them?
Right. Yeah, well, you know, you know how it goes. We have to, in this, you know, fortunately, we're blessed with so many talented people who live in central New York.
Yeah.
Whether they be performing artists or musical artists or poets, but it's a, you know, it's a...
You are able to schedule then, and it's not like you say, we don't have any money. We can't do it yet.
Well, I'll tell you what. Stacy handles the bands and she's, she's good.
Yeah?
Uh, she's very organized and believe me, she, uh, she squeezes, you know, and we get the most we can for...
We do schedule.
For a dollar. Yeah.
Good.
So. Next are the senior programs. That used to be our SVP and senior citizens. One is at Boyle Center. The other is at Schwartz Towers. Now, here's probably something we, we should look at a little bit more in depth. Or, if you look in the services, we pay rent at both facilities. So, for really one full-time and two part-time people, that's, that's some expensive real estate. We probably should look at, you know, an alternative to how we're doing it right now. So, there are some opportunities there and, but that's how it is right now. So, in other words, we're paying two internet fees, two rents. So, I think there's some room for improvement in our, in our efficiency here.
And one of those rents is a long-term contract commitment. The other is year-to-year, so.
Yeah. And one of these, a portion of, now that it's senior, a portion of the senior program's budget is grant-fueled. So, unfortunately, the grant seems to be getting a little smaller each year, but Christina, Christina always seems to find money somewhere. So, being resourceful as she is, she came through again this year and got us some money. Refuge collection. We all know the value that, uh, our people at the landfill provide. This is for the curbside collection of both our garbage and and the recyclables. Now, kudos to the guys down there, the guys and gals down there, because it was, uh, it was difficult, because I was involved in it, how we reconfigured the collection routes. Some of our routes had been in existence for 70 or 80 years, and the guys really embraced it and understood the value of why we were doing it and, uh, really came through. And I think nobody can really argue about the service we provide for our residents here. So. Next one is street cleaning. We just, uh, thanks to the council for approving the sweeper. It's been ordered. This here is the support of that sweeper. So, you got your fuel. You got miscellaneous supplies and things like that. So, probably in the future, maybe next budget, we'll probably roll this into street maintenance, since there's really not much in this anymore. Used to, and we say anymore, there used to be actually people assigned to these departments when we had a lot more people. So, urban forestry, uh, there's one person in this. You can see what they do. Pretty much the same as this year. One thing we have coming at us remembers the Emerald Ash Borer. So, we have a little money allocated in here for some consulting, trying to experiment with, uh, which, which is going to be expensive, but some pesticides to control. But we have so many. If anyone remembers the presentation I did about our tree program, there's roughly, we estimate about 1,200 to 1,400 ash trees within the streets, city trees. It's not including residents' backyards, so it's going to affect all of us. And once the ash, once the borer eats all the ash trees, they will move away, but we'll be left with, uh, dead ash trees. So, they're not jumping from species to species. They're staying right with ash trees. But I think our, our wood is quarantined here in Q County. Cemetery maintenance, uh, we staff it in the summer times. In the summertime, I should say. Sounded like I say sometimes in the summer, but we do have people out there. Lot of weed eating. Tom, do you want to come up? Uh, Tom and Scott are here. You know, Tom from Sewer and Water, Scott from the landfill. So, it's all part of our presentation for public works. Uh, if you have any direct questions about transmission and distribution is just what it is. It's our people that work and bring the water to everybody. Counselor Cuddy, you said it's very important when you turn a tap on what comes out. Well, these are the guys that make sure it comes to you. You know, they're basically on call 24 hours a day, seven days a week. When the phone rings, uh, they're always the, the ones there. So, if you hear the jackhammer at 3:00 in the morning outside your house, chances are it's one of these guys. Not trying to wake you up, but trying to make sure you can shower in the morning. Uh, any questions at all on that? Tom, do you want to discuss the budget at all? It's, here's a, for these, for the next two, you're right there.
As Mike said, we have, um, in the water department, I have five, um, full-time employees in the construction department, uh, one full-time person in the meter department. Uh, we currently are responsible for over 108 miles of, uh, water mains. That's a, some installation and some repair. Um, we have over 2,600 valves, um, that we are responsible for. And obviously, like Mike said, if there's a break out front of your house, we have to chase the problem farther if the valves don't work. So, we've been aggressive on trying to get these replaced. Um, we have roughly 9,000 services in the city of Auburn that we're responsible for. Um, we have, currently have 1,100 hydrants that we're also responsible for. Um, they assist us when we have an, uh, do have a break, we get the air out of line. And we are able to flush the, use them to flush the system to get the better quality water. We also do our, our own mapping in-house with the assistance of the engineering department. Um, we also do the blacktop repair. That, once we make a pothole or make a hole in the winter, obviously, we go back in the summer to put the permanent fix in. And of course, we are responsible for doing dig safe marks. Going through the, the budget real quick. Had, had a modest increase in overtime, because obviously this was a horrible winter, and it's really stressing us to the limits. I've asked for an increase in fire hydrants. Uh, last year, we went through 23. I could probably use 35, and that's what I budgeted for, um, without a problem. There is currently some hydrants that are currently leaking in the city. The leak is underground. You don't see it, but, um, I can't afford to replace a $2,500 fire hydrant. Also, including that is water meters, which didn't go up. Uh, going down to 412 operating supplies, I, uh, went up in that one as well, 5,000. Uh, this is a curb stop. This controls the flow of the water at your house. Uh, originally, I was told by all the, um, vendors that the lead-free brass that we are bounded by, by the law now, that took effect January, went up 35%. This particular model went from $40.05 to $60.13, so it went up 50%. So, the, the costs fluctuate between 35 and 50% for each individual item. Uh, services, we, we just, we did the 440. We combine our cell phones. We do have an iPad now at our disposal. We're trying to take it to the next level. Uh, with a field technology team, we're trying to get GIS so we can improve our response times to the taxpayers. And that will be it for transmission. Just any questions on that real quick?
Tom, you, you've got a, a plate tamper in here. I mean, we, we were talking about the hot patching machine, and we've been talking about doing a better job on transfer restoration.
Yeah, with, um, your blessing, you've already provided us with a brand-new cap backhoe. Um, this plate tamper attachment can go on the end of the backhoe. So, after we're done digging, we can, uh, use the machine to tamp the ditch, tamp the excavation, to get the best possible compaction to, to complete the repair, so we can, uh, make sure we, we have smooth roads.
If I could just say one thing else. So, how many hydrants did you say we had?
1,100.
1,100, and to, we were talking today, to the best of our knowledge, there's only one hydrant currently out of service. So, that's how hard these guys are working. That's how organized Tom has a department. If it is called it, and we all know what hydrants go through, not only dogs, but, you know, uh, people run into them. Plows hit them. Things happen to fire hydrants. So, you know, the guys, Tom does a good job tracking them, and really, to the best of our knowledge, at this moment, there's only one out of service.
Uh, we're moving on to sewers. Um, this department is, um, like the water department, we're focused on maintenance. Uh, we do have, uh, some construction in the water department that does get billed to the property owner, and they do have some revenues. And that will be brought up at a later date. Uh, the sewer aspect of it focuses more on maintenance. We're trying to limit the problems to the individual taxpayers. We currently have seven people on our construction crew. Uh, we can, I can break it up in two ways. We can have, um, four people do flushing and televising of the sewers to find problems. Or they can be the, uh, construction crew, a four-person construction crew. While those guys are out working, we also have a three-person crew that focuses mainly on, uh, catch basins and manhole repairs. And now that we've purchased a street sweeper, and once we go through and, after this hard winter, we're going to have multiple, multiple repairs to do. So, uh, seven guys are kept very busy. Um, again, we're responsible for about 110 miles of sanitary sewer mains. Uh, 65, 65 miles of, um, storm sewer mains, and that does not include the catch basin lead from, um, from the catch basin to catch basin to the main. Uh, we're responsible for three lift stations. Uh, we, we do a monthly BMP program to stay ahead of it, and knock on wood, we've been doing a really good job. Uh, again, with the construction crew, uh, they focus on the catch basin and, and manhole installation and repair. We have a VAC truck that's a multi-purpose vehicle. Um, it does hydroexcavations around high-pressure gas mains, so we don't have to take the chance of digging next to it. Uh, we do the VMP flushing program. We clean catch basins. Uh, we open plug sewers, and I have a problematic list that we stay ahead of, flush quarterly. These problems have been plugging for years, and so I've upped the frequency of times we flush them to stay ahead to, to limit, uh, claims to the city. Again, we do the blacktop, and I forgot to mention one thing in the, uh, water department as well. We do, both departments do supplement the snow plowing. Both crews, uh, so if they're not focused on sewer water repair, they're helping with the snow, snow plowing or the removal. Uh, again, uh, they always have to do the dig safing marks, uh, dig safely marks. Uh, the overtime, I went up slightly in the overtime. I have some big projects that I want to get accomplished. Um, there's a state street sewer replacement where the contractor left off the project limits that I want to fulfill to the next nearest street. I want to fulfill that project, and, um, it's been a, a problematic area. Another project's the Wadsworth Street. It's an interceptor line. It's, uh, through the woods. Um, I've already ordered a pipe. It's 27-inch plastic water main in conjunction with renting a larger excavator. It's something we don't currently have, and we're going to try to do the most of the work in-house, keep the costs down. Uh, other equipment, I did go up in there. Uh, I was, I'm hoping to get a new inside-house lateral camera. This is the smaller camera. We've, a couple of years ago, we got the bigger one that goes in the mainline sewers. I'm trying to get a camera that goes in people's, you have to go in their cellar, and you can go down their lateral and out to the main. Uh, that's roughly $10,000. The other thing that we were, um, going to be asking for is a replacement six-inch, uh, dry-prime pump. We currently have, share or borrow from the water treatment plant, um, one right now every time we need it, and one's in need of some substantial repairs. Um, and again, with that is, um, our current camera, we have a 17, uh, $17,000 lease agreement that we have to fulfill as well. Operating, operating supplies, I went up, uh, $5,000 in that one, just due to the increase in blacktop every, every time petroleum goes up, that price goes out of sight. Services, um, I went down $6,000. Training just stayed the same at 500. Fuels, 18,000, and vehicle repairs, I think we went down. We decreased it to 35,000 there. So, that's it for the two departments. So, do you have any questions?
Thank you.
Continue on with, uh, as you can see, public works, we do a lot of different things down there. Now, we're heading into, wouldn't it really, now we're out of the, well, we're out of the general fund with those two right there. One was out of the water fund. One was out of the sewer fund. Here, we're coming out of the solid waste fund. So, uh, you know, the solid waste administration, just what it sounds like. They administer and support for the curbside collection, all the landfill operations, DEC reporting, and all the sites permitting requirements, including our Part 360, our Title V. and all the sites permitting requirements, including our Part 360, our Title V air permit, and our stormwater discharge. Nothing out of the ordinary here. Like I said, the reporting, the requirements we our reporting requirements take a lot of time, and it's a lot of data, a lot of data review and making sure the data makes sense. So it's highly regulated industries, we all know. You go off into 8162, here's our disposal. This is the operations of the land. You know, we crush the garbage and we bury it. That's really what this means. In addition to that, we also take care of the 275 acres that's down there and make sure we're good neighbors and make sure we follow the law. So all business of being a landfill. Recycling, this also is out of the Solid Waste Fund. So this has two drivers in it. That's the collection of our recyclable. And in this department, just like refuse collection out of the general fund, I should have mentioned that while we were there, that it is part of the landfill function. It comes out of the general, though. They all work closely together. So even though somebody's paid out of recycling, they're also on garbage, vice versa. Or if we have one labor who's paid out of disposal, he's on a garbage truck every day if I'm not if I'm not mistaken. And also, we had during the storm, I think we had four, four of your guys up five plowing last night, so which was a big help. So not only did these guys go and toss about 10 or 12 tons of garbage during the day, but they sat there stiff as a board, probably plowing for everybody so they could get around. Now, next, at the end, the methane gas utilities, that's part of municipal utilities. Sorry about that. It's included in this chain of accounts, but that's coming out of there now. Next, we come to municipal parking. This is a good department between it's good cooperation, interdepartmental cooperation between the Police Department and us at Public Works. What we do at Public, the Public Works function for us is really maintenance of the garage and also for the people who work at the garage, which is two, two part-time labors and two part-time fee collectors. So it was new for us, the whole parking, the business of parking for our city, but as we're getting more used to what requirements our garage has, it's you know, we're getting it down pretty good now. So and as we all know, the things are really busy, more busy downtown, and it really is an asset to have a garage. One thing I apologize that I did miss out of our services here was the camera. Everybody's aware, remember the upgrade, the upgrades we just went through with the parking garage, very needed, came out great. We do have a surveillance system in there now, monitoring system. And what I did, which will be in the next draft you see, is the camera, the camera service for $7,500 a year. So that was, you know, we inherited that. It's a great thing we have it. So knock on wood, we haven't had vandalism since we put it in. Maybe that's the deterrent. But if we did, we would obviously join up with the Police Department, find out who did it, and get compensated. So I apologize if I wasn't clear on anything. That's pretty much us at Public Works. Obviously, we'll be touching these in a little more in-depth as we proceed. So are there any questions right now?
Would you mind emailing your notes to us?
No, no, no.
If that's not a problem, that would be good.
What are you looking for, this right here?
Just that.
It's not very informative, but I just wanted for the public just to have a couple of bullets to look at, because really, with their budget sheets, I don't think-
Oh, the budget sheets are no fun to look at.
Yeah, so.
But that's that does seem good information on it.
Just so I'm clear, you get, I mean, the Department of Public Works, some money from different funds are within the Department of Public Works. So like the Water Fund, you do, there are some monies that come from the Water Fund to help with maintenance and whatnot with-
Well, remember, the Water Fund and the Sewer Fund pay back to the general fund for different services. It just so happens when, back in the day when they combined all the departments, now we're all under one roof, some of the people that report down to our garage are sewer and water people. Out of the Solid Waste Fund, they report down at the landfill. So not that we don't like them, that's just easier for them. We don't have enough room. Another thing also, what I forgot to mention, in Public Works Garage, you'll see there's some money in there, hopefully, not only for fencing, but to try to winterize something so we can park, we can get some heat to some of our trucks. These below zero, it was very difficult. I know one storm in particular, there were four of our plows that wouldn't start because it was just, they were even plugged in, it was just so cold.
When I went to visit before I took office, I had no idea that you had to keep the engine blocks heated, they were plugged in. So again, I know that you're working with, you know, you're working with, you know, obviously, we hope to give you guys what you need so that you can run.
Well, and I'm hopefully, I'm doing my job of conveying some of our needs to you. And I know that, you know, this was a tough storm we just we're still going through right now with the cleanup, but you know, everybody had spring fever with that one sunny day. So I know we got a few frustrated calls today of, you know, Jeepers, I haven't seen a plow yet. In fact, my mother called to tell me that, you know, hey, I love you, son, but I haven't seen a plow all day. But it's very difficult. We went through a few breakdowns. It was a difficult storm. The snow had a high moisture content, so when we lost about 15 to 20 degrees during that day, that froze and it left an ice pack on the road. As you can see, the angle of the sun now, when it's in March, at least it melts some things. So we're going to move some snow out of downtown Saturday morning, so that's not sitting around, and you know, we'll just keep chipping away. So you know, I can just say, if you weren't happy with how we plowed, we did our best. We had a few breakdowns, and you know, everybody can get around now. Like we said before, when we have a high event like we just did, our goal, just like every other city, is to be able to get to every street within 24 hours, which we did. So the guys did a great job, contrary to, I think, what people think, you know, you're in a heated cab plowing. Well, it's tough. It's a very stressful thing. You got people trying to pass you, you got people not liking what you're doing on the road, you know. This was a weird storm because we got calls, not only, hey, you know, you haven't plowed my street, but one lady called to complain that we did plow her street, that we didn't need to plow her street because now we buried her driveway in. So you know, we get some concerns whether we plow, we get some concerns whether we don't plow. It's kind of fun. But you know, we try to get better every event. There's, you know, we'll do the next one a little bit differently for some areas that were problems. So like I said, you know, for the general public, don't ever hesitate to call us because that's how we know if we've missed something, or if they have an idea how we could do it a little bit differently on their street. So thanks for your time.
Thank you.
I'll get I'll send that to everybody.
Thank you.
Next up is Ginny Haynes, Office of Planning and Economic Development.
Thank you. Mike is always a hard act to follow, but I'll do my best here. I have Christina Selvik, Director of Capital Projects and Grants, and Brian Hicks, Senior Code Enforcement Officer, to assist with any questions. The manager asked us to talk a bit about what the office does, what is regulatory or required by contract, what our challenges have been, and then just a little discussion on our budget line. So on your tables, you have an outline of major function areas that we have in planning and in code enforcement. And we'll tackle planning first here. Please feel free to ask any questions as we go along here. In planning, we have five major function areas, planning and zoning, community development, capital projects, grant administration, and economic development. So you can see there, what we've done is we've starred things that are required by local, state, or federal law, or our contractual obligations have two stars there. So planning and zoning, I won't go through every single thing, but you know, we have a comprehensive plan that was adopted a few years ago, and we're working on projects implementing that. Couple of those are brownfields programs and our Wasco River Trail project. We have a lot of board support with planning, our planning board, zoning board, and Historic Resources Review Board. We also do seeker compliance and a lot of technical assistance with planning and zoning. This has been a major challenge for us this year. We've had a primary staff person that had expertise in physical planning went to another position. We've been nine months with that position vacant. Thankfully, we've been able to buy that expertise with consulting, and as we'll talk about in just a little bit here, that's why we desperately need this senior planner position hired. Community development, you can see the programs we run out of there. That's a grant that we receive right now. Our allocation we're anticipating is approximately $815,000, along with revolving loan fund income. We have approximately $1.1 million per year to get out into the community in many different programs. Capital projects, that is, you've seen Christina Selvik with some of the discussion earlier, and multiple projects that she works on, the Capital Improvement Program Plan, management assistance to all five city funds that have been discussed, some of them tonight and some of them to follow, 50 active capital projects, and assistance with all city borrowings. You see a list of 22 grants that she and mostly her, there's a couple of us that administer a couple of those grants, but it's mainly her, and those are projects that range all across city departments, police, fire, engineering, DPW, RSVP's in there. There's a lot of great projects that she keeps good eye on the money. And last but not least, economic development. This is where obviously, we struggle as well. We're not able to do the marketing and business visitation that we used to do, and we'll talk about the reason for that. But we do still have multiple programs that we deliver. We have a facade program, a revolving loan fund for small business. We staff ADA and ALDC. We administer the Empire Zone Program, provide technical assistance for our businesses and homeowners in the historic district with tax credits there. Again, we have challenges with reduced staff, which we'll talk about in a minute. Our scope of work remaining the same or increasing, and projects that we'd like to do, we have dwindling resources at the state and federal level. So always a challenge, but we do our best. So just as quick a step as I can through our budget here. Wanted to just set the context for us as we look at this next budget. You received in your packets a spreadsheet the manager had asked us to do, looking at the last three years and where our budgets have been and where they are now. And you'll see that for planning and economic development, we've sustained a 45% reduction in our budget in the last couple of years. So wanted to talk quickly about the staff related to that. Two years ago, we had eight full-time staff. The adopted 2012-2013 budget cut that to five full-time staff and one part-time staff, and then another half position was cut after retirement. The adopted 2013-14 budget restored one of the part-time positions to full-time and replaced a program manager position with a senior planner at a lower salary, and that's the position that is still vacant. So currently, we have five full-time positions, one vacant, and one part-time position. Please note, again, like I said, a little reduction in work scope. The only thing that we have given up is directly staffing the zoning board of appeals, although we provide significant technical assistance depending on the project going through there, and we're not doing business visitation or marketing. Staff continues to work over capacity for planning, community development, capital projects, and grants, as well as our economic development work. So just taking a quick look at our lines, I'm not going to talk about all of them, just ones that that I want to make some points on. And also, as Mike mentioned, Laura Wills, our controller, has some great ideas about how to make our budgets read a little bit better. So we have added some different budget lines, which I'll mention, and especially with code enforcement, we've done some condensing of departments. So for our salary line and planning, the funds that you see there, $328,275 salaries for five full-time positions. We have community development planner, two senior planners, one of which is vacant, director of capital projects and grants, and director of planning and economic development. So I know that you all know this, but the staff in this department, phenomenally talented, passionate, diligent workers, and they're the reason that we're still delivering the services that we are in the way that we are and the high-quality way that we are. We're in the process of hiring a senior planner.
Excuse me, I'm sorry to interrupt you, but I just, it might be an error because it's just a little, there's a difference between one of the numbers here, director of capital projects, looks like you budgeted less this year than last year?
Well, thanks for the question. That's definitely curious. I'm definitely not suggesting that I want to pay this position less. Again, extremely valuable employee, but what's happened here is in last year's budget, adopted budget, there was provision made for an increase, step increase, and which is based on performance. That increase was not provided. The management policy is expired the last two years, and so this position has not received an increase in the last two years. Again, it was budgeted for but held. So this number, 73724, is where this where she's been at for the last two years. What it should be is approximately $77,000.
Thank you.
So I would love to see it at 77. Thank you for asking.
Thank you.
Okay. So again, we're in the process of hiring a senior planner. We're anticipating $117,000 in staff reimbursements from delivery of the CDBG program and the Brownfield Opportunity Area Grant. And that's what I have on salaries. Any questions on that? Okay. Temporary and part-time line, the $35,500 there are salaries for the part-time secretary and a requested summer intern to assist with CDBG monitoring and special projects.
Let me let me interrupt there because as I've met with various departments, we've talked about maybe a more robust intern program because there are students out there that would benefit, and we certainly benefit from college students who come and work for us who have a particular area of expertise or a particular desire to work in a certain area. So as we go through the budget process, what I'd like to do is to confirm that we'll have a intern program for those kind of students. And so this, this is the first time you'll see it, but we were going to put it in some other departments as well, like engineering.
Great.
I'm sorry.
What is, what kind of overtures have been made to any institutions, any colleges, or yeah, or is it still just in the beginning stages?
I would like the council to confirm that we're going to have a program before we really get aggressive about recruiting.
All right. Next one I was going to touch on is software and software licenses. This is a new budget line suggested by the controller. I think it's a great idea. We've had these stuck in equipment lines or services lines, or they've been all over the place. So everybody's going to have their software costs in this line. In our line, we have $1,300 in there. Our GIS software and licenses are in that line, as well as an Adobe Illustrator Photoshop program. The manager, a few times, has asked for some different projects to be done that we didn't have the ability to do. This will allow us to design and create professional presentation boards, flyers, and maps, and for our purposes, will be helpful with our BOA and CDBG programs. The next one I wanted to talk about, operating supplies. This is a new line in the planning department budget. You'll see it in other budgets. We had an office supplies line, which is now going to be combined with all other departments in the central services budget. So we'll be able to get our regular office supplies from there. So this line talks about different things that are specific to our department. The only item we have in there is a Polk Directory. Some of you know what that is. It's a citywide directory organized by several different categories, name, business, telephone number, and street. Next line I wanted to talk about also because it's new to my department line, you'll see it in other departments, is fees. This is only $245. It's a membership to the American Planning Association. The department has typically had a membership, and with the departure of previous staff person, we no longer have that. This will allow us educational opportunities, trainings, updates on policies, updates on local and regional planning issues, networking opportunities. Consulting fees, again, a new budget line. Consultant services, we've typically been in the services line, which would have been the 440 line. Just going back to that quick, all we have in that line now is our copy release and maintenance and some mailings that we have to do. So consulting fees, we have a couple of things in there, and what we did on our budget reports, if you'll notice, we tried to- if you'll notice, we tried to break things out a little bit further as well at the manager's request. If we need something like a traffic study, if the planning board is requesting that, we're going to procure that and then charge it back to developers. So anything like that should come back. In addition, as part of maintaining certified local government status, historic preservation consultants may be needed. And then finally, a portion of the budget allocation is to ensure that there's funding available for any additional consulting services that may be needed in bringing current and new staff person for physical planning up to speed. We have a special projects line. You might not see this in a lot of other department budgets, but the allocations that are included here will allow us to meet our match obligations for the design portion of the Owassee River Trail project. We've talked a lot about quality of life. This project would do that. A lot of potential to increase tourism revenue, which is great for the bottom-line city budget. This allocation also would leave funding to accomplish the zoning ordinance update, which would be done with our Brownfield Opportunity Area Grant. You've heard us talk a lot about the BOA grant over the last couple of years. The contract finally arrived, so we're looking at moving that forward now. So the BOA, in addition to the zoning ordinance update, will assist us in creating redevelopment plans for our brownfield sites that we've been working on with the existing EPA grant that we have. Training, we have a couple of different things in here than you've seen in the past. We're looking for physical planning and secret training in here, which we have had in the budget. Munis training, there's different things that can be done in munis that we aren't using it for, and we really want to get up to speed on that. And also, again, related to the city's certified local government status, our Historic Resources Review Board needs to attend training. The 800 lines, which is our benefits lines, they are going back into department budgets. So I really appreciate Laura Wills' assistance with obtaining those numbers. She calculated those numbers for every city employee, and we were able to get those and put those into our budget so you could see by department what the cost of our employees are. So that is planning. Any questions?
Actually, this one is for Doug. Have we made, where are we in the senior planner hiring process?
I'd have to ask Jenny. I know all the paperwork's processed.
Yes, resumes, our deadline is tomorrow, actually, and then we will be looking at doing interviews.
Okay. So that's moving forward then?
Yes.
And, let's see here. So 45% reduction over the last, how many years?
Two.
Two years? And you're, wow. Okay, yeah, like with the Department of Public Works, the planning department, again, I just see, has been decimated over the last few years. And, you know, when I ran for office, my intent was to really begin to, to really move Auburn forward, and I think what needs to happen is that the council needs to support the employees that work for the city and to support the initiatives, whether it be infrastructure, whether it be public works. And, you know, I agree, we have such a great and talented planning department, and, you know, I just, it's really, you know, upsetting just to see a pay cut for an employee that devotes so much to this city. And, you know, I really think that instead of approaching budgets as though the city is going to be closing shop, we need to take inventory for the people of Auburn and begin to capitalize on some of the great things that are happening in the city. And, you know, I want to, again, I want to hear from the various department heads, give them the, give them the opportunity to let us know where they are, what they would like to do, and I think it's, our task is to listen and to really look at the big picture and see what is going to be best for this city. And I think that this is one department, like the first department we've heard from Public Works, that needs the support of Auburn City Council so that Auburn can expand its scope and really be competitive to attract businesses and to attract young families into this community. So I just want to say, you know, thank you for the presentation and the work that you're doing for us.
Thank you, counselor. Any other questions on planning?
I don't have a question, well, I do have many, but I do want to piggyback. I was going to make a comment about that the individual is Christina, let's be honest. Christina has carried the ball. We've been up and down with comptrollers and various other staff, and she's kept it together for a lot, wore a lot of hats, I guess is the best way to say it. I feel really bad that, that, and you don't, I did not know that you, she does not say a word about things, that your pay was cut. It's not right. And your department was cut. To me, the planning department's always been the department that brought money into the city. And to cut the artery that brings the money into the city, it doesn't make sense to me when it happened, and the fact that you're still keeping your head above water and smiling is a credit to you all, the whole department. I know there's a lot of work up there, up there, and I know what you do because I work here. Citizens may not see it right away, but they do, and they just don't know where you've touched or what you've touched. There's a lot of money that goes into the streets that come through, comes through the planning department. And it's, 45% cut in a department is a really big hit, and it's too bad it's the department that brings in the money. But maybe eventually we can build it back up and get, I mean, you're still doing what you need to do. And the other thing, this is not related directly to planning, but it reminds me that not only, I think, some of the positions that are lumped in with the management group have been cut or froze. The management team of the city has either been cut or had their salary, not cut, their salaries have been cut or frozen over the last, I think, five years. They have not gotten a raise, and if anything changed, it was cut. And I really hope this year, in this budget, that is not going to be the case, even if it's a nominal, it's just wrong that the people that lead the people that are doing all this work are not acknowledged. I know that everybody's in a pinch, and it's hard to hear that, somebody didn't get a raise when other people don't have a job. I understand that, because right now, I'm pretty much unemployed myself. So I understand. But I really think it's, one year maybe, two years, okay, but five years is really outrageous. So I hope we can look to, there's only eight, I think, department heads to do that. But thank you for the planning presentation. I hope we can work to move some of these the way you want them to go, I hope.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Onto code enforcement. Planning has the privilege of being linked to code enforcement, and it is a privilege. Just want to set the big picture for code enforcement. Again, you have in your packet the same kind of spreadsheet for code enforcement that talks about what's happened with the budgets over the last couple of years. Code enforcement has sustained a 30% reduction in the last couple of years to their budget. Just a quick review of the staff. At this time last year, the office had five full-time and two part-time staff. The adopted 2013-2014 budget cut that to four full-time and one part-time staff, a loss of one and a half positions. One of those, you hear me talk all the time about the keyboard specialist position, we've talked about that a lot, and we'll talk about it more. So again, no reduction in work scope. It was critical that we create capacity somehow for the clerical staff. That's why you've seen the counter hours reduced over the last few months, as you know. Code staff continuing to work over capacity to deliver their services. This budget is going to look a lot different than what you've seen in the past. In the past, you saw plumbing board budget separate, electrical board, code enforcement, and demolition, all separate in different budget lines. Again, with the comptroller's guidance, we have consolidated those lines all under code enforcement. We have worked to make sure you can see how those things moved into those different categories. If you have any questions, please let me know. Quick on the salary lines, 271714, that's the salaries for existing four full-time positions, as well as the requested restoration, that is not an addition of staff, this is a restoration of the keyboard specialist position. We have senior code enforcement officer, two code enforcement officers, and a secretary. And again, we would like to see the keyboard specialist restored. Again, very talented, passionate, diligent staff, still successfully delivering their quality services over capacity with their own work and work they've had to pick up from positions that have been removed. The keyboard specialist position is critical to the efficient operations of the office. And again, just a quick update on revenues. We've talked about this in the past, but as of the end of February 2014, $154,779 in revenue has been received. That number would cover 57% of the total budgeted salaries in code enforcement for the next fiscal year, and that's only through February. Saying that another way, that also means that we've received enough revenue to pay for the keyboard specialist salary five times. Would really love to see that position restored. I'll touch on the overtime line. We have $18,000 in there requested. Overtime for code enforcement is generated by callouts from the police and fire department, as well as especially this year, catching up backlog of work because of the loss of the keyboard specialist and part-time code enforcement officer positions. Okay, again, the new software and software licensing line. This was something that, as I was preparing the budget, that I missed, and you'll see this in the next draft from the manager. The view permit software, we are closing in on bringing that live at the end of May for building permits. We're in weekly conference calls with the vendor as we're getting that up to date. This is going to be approximately an $8,000 budget line. It's $135 per month per user, and that's five users in code enforcement. So that's where I got that number. Going back to the planning software line, we're going to have two users in planning, and we're going to be adding $3,200 to that line. So that'll be in your next draft that you see. Operating supplies, this line has existed in this department, and so you can see in the line there, the different things that would be charged to that, radio batteries, flashlights, plumbing board, testing materials, things like that. Telephone and other utilities, again, a new budget line. We have three cell phones assigned to the department, one for the senior code enforcement officer, one shared for on-call, and one for the plumbing inspector. Services line, again, we have copy, release, and maintenance in there. We have the plumbing board, secretarial services, and other services. And then the biggest piece of the budget is the trash, grass, and snow removal contracts. And just quick again to link that to the keyboard specialist. In order to provide those services at that level, we need that position in order to respond to those property maintenance complaints and get those services out there. Fees, this line has been in the code enforcement budget, out of it, back in it now. Again, these are memberships to different building officials associations. These memberships are really important because the code enforcement officers have continuing education requirements, and memberships to these organizations, $535 total, gives us free or discounted classes that can be applied towards their 24 hours of required training. So we'd like to see those memberships stay. Consulting fees, new budget line. Again, if we need engineering or architectural services, which we did need for the Plaza of the Arts project this year, what we'll be doing now is we will be procuring those and then charging those back to the development projects, so that money would come back. The bigger-ticket item you're seeing in there, and members of council that have been council for a couple of years, you know that we've been asking for housing code update that is needed in order to come into compliance with state housing code. And last is the demolition line. There's eight houses that Brian has identified that should be demolished, that either have prepared demolish orders on them now from the Corps or will. The $100,000 request in there would handle two or three houses if we're lucky, depending on hazardous material testing and mitigation costs. And again, without this funding, they'll continue to stay in there. Again, the 800 lines for the benefits, I appreciate Laura's assistance with those, and you can see those specific to the code enforcement office as well. And that's all I had.
Jenny, for planning and code enforcement, and I need to ask Mike this also, increase compared to last year, what are you proposing?
Compared to last year, and I did that calculation.
If you wanted to ask, yeah.
And what I did, just so you know, just so you know what I took out, I took out the 800 budget lines when I made that calculation, because if you look at your budget sheet, you don't have those in there. So taking those out, it's a 3.7% increase for planning. And for codes, it's a little over 20%. And the reason for that is the demolition line, I'm requesting $100,000, and there was $50,000 in there before, the housing code update, trash, grass, and snow contracts, an increase in that, hoping that we can get that out there. Remember, that $70,000, that all comes back, because those are built to property owners with a 50% administrative charge on top.
Now, the 800 line is what are you referring to? I don't have in front of me.
The 800 lines are retirement, social security.
Expend, or?
Yep, the Bennys.
Yeah.
So.
Do you know offhand what the increase on those is?
I don't.
That's fine.
We can get you that.
Please.
Now, for the code enforcement, we've been seeing $154,000 in revenue, and this is only for part-time, correct? For being open only three days a week?
Yes, two days a week.
Two days a week.
Yeah.
So I know that Council McCormick has fielded the idea of reopening the code, codes department for five days a week. Is that, I mean, based on the trend of the income with only two days a week, this, we could, you know, anticipate that we could be generating more income if we were to open up five days a week.
Yes.
But your, but this is only, yours is only projected if it stays open two days a week, correct?
Yeah, I mean, that's actual income that was received as of the end of February. And again, a lot of that is due to the building permit fees, and the council had increased those as of the January, sorry, the July 1st budget, and that has been, you know, extremely generous as far as the revenue goes. And if we were open full-time, we can only anticipate that that would be even higher, yeah.
Your budget requested, was that with the idea that we would be open five days a week?
Yes. The keyboard specialist position would allow us to open back up five days a week, yep. So we'll look forward to working with the council. I know that my next stop is with the manager, and he'll be looking at what we need to do after all the departments have their requests in, and I anticipate he'll be pushing back on me a bit, and we'll be ready for that.
Thank you.
I just, Mike, did you have any numbers on how much increase total budget was from last year?
No, because I want to, I wrote that down.
Okay.
But I want to make sure.
That's the hard part.
Yeah.
You know, what includes benefits for, you know, some of the parking people went to the police department, so just want to make sure.
When you get a chance, if you get it, ask us, please.
Thanks. Anyone else have a question?
And as you mentioned, the comptroller's office will present at a subsequent meeting in order to allow us to shorten a otherwise lengthy meeting.
Yeah, I agree.
Any other business? We're still on other business.
Yeah, we are. We're still on other business. Is there anyone that has other business for tonight?
Yes, I do.
Counselor Cuddy?
I would like to, I know that Vicki Murphy, Director of Municipal Utilities, has asked the council to move forward in coming up with some kind of direction. I would like to see the bond ordinance.
I would like to see the bond ordinance back on the agenda for next week, and hopefully that the, any questions that Counselor Camardo might have will be answered within that time. And I understand that, you know, bond ordinances may be amended, but because of that, I would like to, I would like to have the bond ordinance be the original bond ordinance for $3.4 million. And if there's anything that arises in the next week where, you know, there's, there is some kind of consensus by the council, that we may need to adjust that to a lower number that is justified by the actual numbers presented and discussed. I think that that is, that is, I'm sorry, Christina, is that true, the council can't adjust the number of the bond ordinance, and that can be amended? Okay, and that would not mess up any kind of, okay?
I believe it's, yes, the amount and the time.
The amount and the term, the term?
Term, right, correct.
Okay. So I would like it to start off at the original amount that the staff had requested, and that's where I would like to, like, that's where I would like to go. And that way, you know, we have the presentation tonight, they gave us a scenario one, we have the original scenario of our original bond ordinance, and then we have the third scenario, which is basically a, from my perspective, basically a complete tax or rate increase. So basically, we can either come to some agreement as to how much we can borrow, or we could unilaterally raise the taxes on the people of Auburn through the water rates. So I would like to see a, like to see a bond ordinance.
Anything else?
I'm just going to ask my questions, so maybe Doug and Lauren can get those questions answered this week. I want a complete review of the water capital account, and I also want to see all the bond anticipation notes that were for two projects, the state dam and New York Street project, because I think Franklin Street was provided already, so if I could get those--
Sorry, can you repeat that slower?
Yes. Complete water, complete accounting of the water capital account?
Can you explain what you mean by that?
Your water capital account that you're talking about right here, the 1.7--
But what do you mean, a complete accounting?
What's in there and where it came from?
That would take weeks. I'm not going to be able to do that by tomorrow.
No, I'm not asking for tomorrow. Sometime next week, can you get it for me?
I'll start, I guess.
And if I can, if I can find out all the bans that were authorized for the state dam project and for the York Street project.
You already have that?
Pardon me?
Don't you already have that?
No, not for total projects. I got them just for the water. I don't have them for the total project. And do you know if they were turned into a bond yet?
No, they're bans.
They're still bans, okay.
You want state dam and York Street?
Yes, because you already gave me Franklin Street.
You have the water portion of those, though?
Right, right. Just the other parts.
The report, the one, counselor, the review of the water capital account, you want, what would that entail?
I have no idea, I'm sorry.
So I want to make sure you know what he needs. I don't know what he needs either.
I can give you the detailed general ledgers, I guess.
Yeah, could you please?
Is that what you want, the general ledger?
Yes, the 1.797 that you have in there now.
Is it a timeframe, like, from January of some year till, is that what you want, within a certain window of time?
Are you asking me, is that what you want to know?
I'm agreeing with her.
Whatever, whatever the time limit is that these two projects participated in that capital fund. So the two projects that are, that I'm questioning, the state dam project, York Street and Franklin Street with the capital project.
Counselor, I'm just trying to help you get the information you need, because--
Thank you, I appreciate that. I just want to make sure--
I want to make sure Laura has the question.
--so I can find out what seems to be a problem here with--
There may not even be a problem. That's what I--
Well, that's, your interpretation mine is, I think there is something here that we need to look into. At least I do. I'm not speaking for the rest of the council. Thank you, that's all I had.
Okay. Anyone else have any other business?
Yes. I'd like to know, since we are looking at the budget, Doug, I guess, when are we going to start doing a long-term, five-year plan? Again, I think we should seriously consider a financial review committee, as suggested by our audit committee. And also, as per recommendation from our audit committee, I would like to suggest that we have an operational audit done this next cycle, as it, the prior one uncovered a significant area, number of areas where we needed to improve. And we should really seriously consider the financial review committee, as, again, suggested by our audit committee. I'd also like to have us reconsider the state financial review board and their recommendations. I know they, they're offering money that if you implement their suggestions, it's only going to help the city. Again, we're not, I don't see, we're not giving up any control here. The decision to move forward on any of the review board recommendations is our call to make, and I, if, if we can use the help, I think we can definitely, should allow an extra set of eyes on our, on our operations here. Plus, they even may give some money to fund these, excuse me, recommendations. So I really think we ought to reconsider this, these options. One other point I'd like to make, and we're in the throes of fire negotiations, and I'll give this to you, Corporation Council, I've got some opinions from NICOM nepotism, and I understand our code of ethics covers family relationships and contract interests. And if I'm reading our code right, when these exist, the individual should refrain from participation in contract discussions and subsequent voting. I've been recently made aware that the mayor has a sibling, and I believe it to be a brother on the fire department. And since we're in negotiations with this department, and a contract may soon be a result of this, I'd like the opinion from the Corporation Council on this.
Well, I have looked at it, and I have also conferred with NICOM. First of all, in the general municipal law, Article 18, there are no provisions related to nepotism, number one. Secondly, NICOM does not review any municipal code of ethics. They don't have the staff, nor do they want to get involved in that. Excuse me. Thirdly, I have read the opinions that you received--
Mm-hmm.
--and they relate to spouses, members of the same household, or a son, again, members of the same household. And it is my opinion that there is no direct correlation between the mayor voting on a contract for a unit wherein a sibling is employed who's totally independent and emancipated. And thirdly, excuse me, the other issue is that this does not create a direct benefit, but it's a benefit for an entire class, which is about 70 fire department employees. So you can raise the question if you like, but it's my opinion that it's not applicable.
Well, I'm reading 33-3. Says, "No municipal officer or employee may participate in any discussion or take any official action with respect to any matter requiring exercise of discretion, including discussion matter and voting on it, when he or she knows it or has a reason to action that could confer a direct or indirect financial or material benefit on himself or a relative or any private organization." Now, relative is defined, a spouse, parent, step-parent, sibling, step-sibling, sibling-spouse, child, stepchild, uncle, aunt, nephew, niece, first cousin, or household member of the municipal officer or employee. So I, if I'm reading this right, that does fulfill those requirements, and I would ask you to reconsider it.
I have looked up both our ethics and Article 18 of general municipal law, and it is my opinion that it does not apply.
Okay.
We can disagree, but that is my opinion.
Thank you. Anyone else? Do we have any other executive session? We're all set there.
No, thank you.
Motion to adjourn? Counselor Cuddy, second. Counselor Camardo, call the rule, please.
Counselor McCormick?
Aye.
Counselor Camardo?
Yes.
Counselor Cuddy?
Yes.
Counselor Rizik?
Yes.
Adjourn.[1212.16]